Okay. Thirty seconds.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Bulmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed.
Here.
You have eighteen present, Mr. President.
We have a quorum. Quorum being present, let's everybody in the chambers and galleries who's able to stand and please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of All Authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. We dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests. Alderwoman from thirteenth.
Jeff Hans and Samuel Adams from the Carpenters Regional Council. Thank you.
All of them from the twenty-third.
Board, I have Brian Westbrook from the Coalition of Life.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Colleagues, it's great to have you all back and in session again, and I look forward to another productive work week here. I'd like to have as my honored guest Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local 73, Clinton McBride from Laborers Union, and Kate Kasis.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further? Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
I want to recognize Frederick Cersei as my guest with the Director Minority with the contractors.
Alderwoman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of board. I'd like to have my special guest Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T.
Alderwoman from the six.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize Allison Dreef with Neyual, Missouri.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderwoman from the eighteenth.
I'd like to have as my special guest today Mr. Mala Rogers, who is to my left.
Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have Kate Kasis as my special guest today. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Members of the board, I'd like to introduce Sean Weller from Congressman Clay's office as my guest today.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderwoman from the tenth, like to wraps up.
Hey, Mr. President, members of the board. So wonderful to be here on a Monday, April 16th. In 1867, Wilbur Wright was born. In 1966, Percy Sledge released everyone's favorite song, "When a Man Loves a Woman." In 1943, the hallucinogenic effects of LSD was confirmed and discovered, which leads us to what this day is. Today is National Mushroom Day, coincidentally. Thank you very much.
We also have joining us in the balcony, the walking group called the Ten Toes. They walk a range from .3 to five miles depending on the group and the destination. The walking groups meet at the MetroLink station and take metro transit to the destination. They say they walk in a variety of places such as Forest Park, Crandall Park, downtown St. Louis, and the Delmar Loop. So let's give them a big round of applause and thank them for joining us today. Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
I would like to recognize some of my yoga friends up there that I do yoga with on Tuesdays. Also, it's a wonderful group, and I know AARP sponsors it. And as a member of AARP, they're doing something in May that'll include this, and they're going to do a tour of the arch. I believe it's May 25th.
Okay.
So anybody that's interested, and you have to be over 50, I believe, but welcome, everyone.
Alderwoman from the seventh, did you have an announcement? Alderwoman from the eighteenth, recognized on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the March 9 minutes.
Moved by Alderwoman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderwoman from the fourteenth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse, motion carries. Report to city officials.
Reports of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C, and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes.
I have from the office of the mayor.
I have submitted to the board the following individuals for appointment to the Regional Convention and Sports Complex Authority Commission, Mr. Christopher Saraceno.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Regional Convention and Sports Complex Authority Commission.
I would like to recommend Mr. Christopher Saraceno as for an appointment to the Regional Convention and Sports Complex Authority.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the fourteenth, seconded by Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse, motion carries.
I have submitted to the board the following individuals for appointment to the St. Louis Housing Authority Commission, Regina D. Fowler and Mr. Constantino Ochoa Esquire.
Alderwoman from the sixteenth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Housing Authority Commission.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I request approval of Regina D. Fowler and Mr. Constantino Ocho to the St. Louis Housing Authority Commission.
Moved by Alderwoman from the sixteenth, seconded by Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse, motion carries.
Petitions and communications, we have none.
Hold on for a second.
I'm sorry.
Hold on a second.
There's nothing further, Mr. President.
All right, we will dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Alderwoman from the twenty-third.
Number forty to the consent calendar, third reading consent.
Mr. Clerk, please make note of that. Place Board Bill number forty from the third reading informal calendar to the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move Board Bill 254 to the third reading consent.
Mr. Clerk, please make note of that. Place Board Bill 254 on the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the six.
Mr. President, could you please remove Board Bill 34 Committee Substitute from the informal calendar to the third reading calendar?
Madam, Mr. Clerk, please place Board Bill 34 Committee Substitute on the regular third reading calendar.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the ninth.
President, I would like to move Board Bill 264 to the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. Clerk, make note of that change. Place Board Bill 264 on the regular, on the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
So you should have a Board Bill forty, 254, and 264 on third reading consent, and Board Bill 34 Committee Substitute on the regular third reading calendar, and place them at the end of the calendar.
Yes, sir.
We will dispense with line items ten through fourteen. Perfection consent.
Board Bill 270 CS, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance approving a minority and women-owned business enterprise program for the city of St. Louis, authorizing certain other actions, amending ordinance 69427 pertaining to workforce inclusion by amending Sections 3, 4, 5, and 10 of said ordinance, which are codified in Sections 3.110.020, 3.110.030, and 3.110.040, and 3.110.090 of the revised code, to increase percentage goals for minority women and city residents, and put in balance a mandatory one-year disqualification penalty, and liquidated damages for developers and contractors who fail to meet the goals in containing a severability clause.
Alderwoman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
For adoption of the third reading consent.
Alderwoman from the first.
Object.
Okay.
I would like to ask questions on Board Bill 270.
Would you like it?
I would move to remove it from the third reading.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, please place Board Bill 270 Committee Substitute on the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Is that the end of the third reading consent?
Yes, sir.
Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 270 CS, sponsored by Alderman Jeffrey Boyd, an ordinance approving a minority and women-owned business enterprise program for the city of St. Louis, authorizing certain other actions, amending ordinance 69427 pertaining to workforce inclusion by amending Sections 3, 4, 5, and 10 of said ordinance, which are codified as Sections 3.110.020, 3.110.030, 3.110.040, and 3.110.090 of the revised code, to increase percentage goals for minority women and city residents, and to put in place a mandatory one-year disqualification penalty and liquidated damages for developers and contractors who fail to meet the goals in containing a severability clause.
Alderwoman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number 270 Committee Substitute.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for perfection of Board Bill 270 Committee Substitute.
Moved by Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh, entertain the second on that motion. Seconded by Alderwoman from the twenty-third. Alderwoman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, Board Bill 270 Committee Substitute is the minority inclusion bill, and the city of St. Louis has come a long way at finally being able to put some teeth in a bill as it relates to minority participation. In order to do this bill, we need to have a disparity study where we can get empirical data that we use in order to justify the percentages of the goal that we've put forth. This is a process and a study that's about two years old now. There's been a lot of research done as far as the study. And what came out of the study was there's a disparity with African-Americans by 22% based on utilization of the workforce or actually the businesses that are actually MBE/WBE satisfied, certified, I'm sorry. There's 2% disparity with Hispanics, a half a percent with Asians, and a half a percent with Native Americans, and 11% with women-owned businesses. Now, we've been operating with an executive order for probably three decades with 25 and 5, 25% minority participation, 5% women. What the disparity study showed for me was women-owned enterprises really went out and did the work. More of them was put into the pool, and instead of hoping that, what we would like to have seen, that women went down to maybe 1% because they were being utilized. But unfortunately, they went up by 6% to 11% because they were severely underutilized. The other thing that the bill does, it provides for a penalty if developers do not make the serious good faith effort to hire minorities and meet these goals. It also provides a 5% bid discount on goods and services for all of the groups, the Hispanic, the African-American, the Native American, and women-owned business enterprises. And so in a nutshell, that's what the board bill is all about, and I'll take any questions that people would have. But the city has really gotten serious with minority participation, and we finally have the empirical data to justify.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd ask if the alderman from the twenty-second would yield?
Alderwoman from the twenty-second will yield to the alderwoman from the first.
Yes.
Alderwoman from the first, please proceed.
Sometimes when I ask questions, it's not because I'm opposed, but I want to bring more information to the forefront. I'm guessing, I'm looking around since the alderman from the eighteenth, well, he's here, but the other alderman that would have been here since this started, when we started back in the 90s, was the alderman from the seventeenth. And I guess we've had maybe three, four studies, been through three or four mayors, never got anything done because the percentage for African-Americans was a lot higher when we started out. So we got a little improvement, but not the way we should. I got a lot of letters from different ethnic minorities upset about this board bill, saying about how it wasn't fair, and they wanted to have more inclusion. So I wanted to ask the alderman, and I already know the answer. What did you base your percentages on?
The percentages were based on a disparity study.
And I already know this. The disparity study is required by law, and it's a well-known case back in Virginia back in the 1990s, or maybe even the 80s, that says that in order for you to have a legal goal or law, you have to base it on a disparity study. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so that was, it went all the way up to the Supreme Court.
That's correct.
The case, okay. So when we got these requests from other people, other ethnic minorities, some of which I'm a part of, Native American, I'm part of that, we didn't really have any wiggle room to change that because it had to be based on a study. Is that right?
It was based on a study, and again, the study had to utilize the data that was before us whereby they had to be MBE/WBE certified at the time.
Okay. And as you said, we've been had executive orders. We had one even before Clarence Harmon, actually. They started with Vin Chaimo. Okay, so we've been had executive orders, but they weren't really enforceable. If anybody had ever taken them to court, we wouldn't have had anything to stand up on, okay? So I'm glad to see this coming along. Can you tell me, when will this, if this is passed, when will this go into effect?
The mayor has, cannot sign the bill for 10 days, and then it becomes effective 30 days after that.
Okay. And so with that applied retroactively to the things that are already in the pipeline and have already been bid out?
I don't think it's retroactive because it's, won't be effective until probably 40 days.
Okay, but, okay, but just to say that something's been bid out already, and they were depending on the law as it was in effect, is it your understanding we would go back and retroactively make those people?
Absolutely not. That would not be fair.
And that's not what you intended with your legislation?
Absolutely not.
And if we found out that that was the case, would we be willing to try to address that in some kind of way?
Well, St. Louis Development Corporation is the one that has to administer this at the end of the day, and I would hope that we have reasonable people over there that would be supportive of the fact that we can't go back and require somebody to do something that was not in effect at the time. To me, that's just not logical, and it's only common sense.
Now, for me, I wish almost we can because we've taken so long. I tell you, we started this, I got elected in 91. Here we are in 2018. So it's not like people shouldn't have known it was coming. But just on a fairness basis, if you've already had your stuff bid out, then we don't look to try to punish people and say, now you, ah-ha, we got this new law. We're not trying to be the state of Missouri who comes back and retroactively changes our laws.
That's correct, and I would certainly support a contractor who's in that situation and defend them with St. Louis Development Corporation.
Thank you, Alderman. Mr. President, I stand in support of this ordinance. It is a long time coming. I'm sorry that we haven't had it done before this. For the people who feel like they've been left out, again, this is based on historical data. The data is even more up-to-date than it should have been when the law should have been passed. Because when we first started looking at this, there was no Hispanic population. I do believe the Native Americans kind of probably have more priority than even black people since they were here in the first place, and we took their land. So I got a pull for the Native Americans. I do think that we, but I don't know if the law allows this, but I think we need to go back and address that from a whole holistic perspective of, when you look around here, even though we don't have any black people up here, we have Native Americans up here because they were here. But the law is pretty specific about what it requires and how it's done, and it's not trying to leave out other minorities. They were not enough of a significant factor to make what they want possible under the law. And if you want to change the Supreme Court laws, then you need to take a case up and get it heard by the Supreme Court. But as it is now, that's the way it is. And such as it is, it's a long time coming. And so I want to join in support of this and say that this is a good step, although late. And I just wanted to, because one of my colleagues had some concerns about retroactively affecting people, that even though I wish it would have been earlier, it is not fair if we retroactively affect people, and we as a body should address that if that comes before us. And with that, I would like to say again, I join in in supporting this legislation, and I would ask that, if it's not too late, if you would add my name to the...
Absolutely.
All right, thank you so much.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Will the alderman from the twenty-second yield for questions?
Alderwoman from the twenty-second, will you yield for questions to the alderman?
Absolutely.
Alderwoman from the seventh, please proceed.
Thank you, Alderman, and I apologize if I missed this because I was not at the committee hearing. My only question revolves around cost. I was looking online, I couldn't find a fiscal note for this bill. Was a fiscal note prepared for this?
I do believe a fiscal note was prepared.
Okay. And I don't know why, it's not online. But could you talk to me a little bit about just costs? This bill does a number of things, mainly, you know, it requires within two years, another disparity study. It also has some staffing requirements in, I believe, Section 5. I was just hoping you could speak to just sort of general costs associated with implementing and conducting the, what's set forth in the bill.
Well, I can't give you specific numbers, but it's my understanding that the staff is already in place to implement this program. They're utilizing the current staff that they already have.
Okay. So existing staff that already, are they at the airport?
No, staff at St. Louis Development.
At SLDC, okay.
The program is already in place. It's just that this is a little different way of administering the program with the current staff. But we want to make sure that there's always staff in place to administer the program so that we don't just go through the motions and things fall through the crack and we're not meeting our goals.
Okay, and you're confident there is a fiscal note prepared for this bill?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to inquire the alderman from the twenty-second, please.
Alderwoman from the twenty-second, will you yield a question to the alderwoman from the eleventh?
Absolutely.
Alderwoman from the eleventh, please proceed.
Thank you. First, I just want to ask you, does this have any effect on the workforce, on putting minorities to work as a workforce as a whole?
There is a workforce component in the bill, which basically supplements the workforce requirements we already have in the city code, with the city residents.
So you believe by passing this bill that more minorities will be put to work on more job sites and through the city projects?
I do. When developers increase minority participation with all the groups that a disparity exists with, you will find that most of those companies' employees are minority as well. Now, certainly, we can find companies that are majority company-owned, and their workforce could be majority minorities, or we can find those who are minority-owned, and the majority of their workforce is a white population, not minorities.
Because the way I see this bill is somebody can have a 51% shareholder in the business, in the contracting company, but they, this bill does not require them to hire any minorities.
Yeah, well, there is, for city residents, minorities participation on it, so you kind of get it from that angle.
And that's the good faith effort, correct?
Yeah, everything in the bill is a good faith effort. The good thing about this bill, though, we are very serious about what the good faith effort looks like. The days of just saying, I couldn't find anybody, I went to MoC and it is what it is, are pretty much over. Because they knew that without having a real disparity study, the executive order was just eye-wash.
And so that applies to hiring minority workers, not just the contractor?
Right, but we cannot require them to hire employees that are minority.
That's my concern.
But what I mean, as far as a permanent workforce, what we can require them to do, if they want incentives from the city of St. Louis, is to make sure that they have a minority workforce. They can go to the unions and get minorities. There's all different ways that they can create a minority workforce in order to meet those goals. And from looking at reports from SLATE, the majority of the companies are meeting those goals right now with city residents.
Because that's where I see sort of a hiccup on this bill, is that, you know, I have a women-owned business, but there's really nothing that requires me to, if I bid on a project, there's nothing that requires me to hire anyone but, you know, white men.
Yeah, well, we also potentially have issues with companies that are certified as women-owned businesses, but they're not necessarily managed by a woman. Because it's in the wife's name, and then the husband really runs the business. I mean, but you can't police everything.
I understand. I just feel like if we were really serious about getting our numbers up to reflect the population in this city, which I believe we need to do, I don't think this legislation does that.
Okay.
My next question is, can we see the fiscal note?
I'll have to call over to SLDC and have them send that over.
Okay, that would be great. And then one thing I've expressed to you as well is, I have a project in my ward, they're in the middle of negotiations, they're trying to get the numbers to work. They do have bids in from contractors. Another thing, a lot of times, a developer will do, will have three different projects, and they'll work with the same contractors because they can get a better deal. And so I think several of us might have that kind of scenario going on in our wards, and this would affect them where they have to go back and start all over again with their numbers and the way they apply for their loans.
But the effective date is probably 40 days from now. So they have a chance to do their due diligence and get all their data and put their loan package together right now. And if we use that same logic, then we'll never pass a bill.
And I understand why...
Because there will always be a contractor that's working on getting bids and working on getting a loan, and then we'll just keep kicking this can down the road, so...
I understand that, but at the end of the day, there's still the final passage of this bill. And I think whether we did it five years ago or five years from now, we still shouldn't have just this drop-dead date on this is what you have to do because I think there should be a phase in. I think that's only fair because if I have a development in my ward, they've already put in their application for their loans, they may have to retract that and start all over again.
I would think they would be exempt. As I had said to the alderwoman of the first ward, the effective date won't be for 40 days. So if they're already in the queue and they're already working with SLDC, then they should not be subjected to that. However, I would hope that they're doing their due diligence and maximizing the amount of minority participation, period. Here's what's frustrating...
And I agree with you, and I've worked with developers to ensure that, and I've asked them, it's a question, you know, before I want to support their projects.
Yeah, here's what's frustrating for the African-American community, that developers consistently and constantly say, well, if I do business with the African-American community, it's going to cost more. I don't believe that. There are good African-American companies out there that give good bids, and that's always used as a smoking gun And that's always used as a smoking gun to not do the work. And it's time that developers do the work. That's all we're asking them to do. And being able to have teeth in our legislation will really kind of move the needle with them to do the work.
I disagree with you, though, on the teeth part, because at the end of the day, I don't know if we're going to see many changes with the actual workforce, with the, you know, the electricians out there, the, I think that that's going to have to be separate legislation, if you really want to see that.
Well, and the workforce piece is also part of a separate legislation that we have in our city code to deal with city residents. Because if you're doing business with the city of St. Louis, you want our incentive, then you should be using city residents at the end of the day. And we cannot, again, St. Louis Development Corporation is going to have to administer this program in a way that's fair, right? And so based on having maybe a limited pool of minority firms out there, you can't expect this particular firm to be on five jobs at the same time, which means that you're going to have to take away from somewhere else. But that also should suggest that they're at least at 22%, because we're saying that there's 20% availability. Also, you have to look at what trade they may be in. So you may not hit the 22% all the time. It depends on what you're looking for. For example, you're not going to find minority companies that are in iron, for example. So we can't hold a developer's feet to the fire that, you know, this particular job, maybe it's 80% has to do with iron work. There's no minorities out there that's doing that work, that own companies. So we have to give a pass, per se, because it just doesn't exist. I mean, we can't hold their feet to the fire when the capacity is not there. However, when the capacity is there, we need to demand that they utilize.
And this leads to the study, so the numbers are from when? 2007, 2010, the data we're operating off of?
2015.
That's when they released it, but when did they, the data, though, that they used, I think, is from when?
I think it did go back. It's about a five or six-year window.
And my concern there is it was done during a recession.
It was...
So it was done during a recession.
Okay.
So I don't know. I understand everyone's frustration about this taking so long, and we've been on this for years, but I just got here. It didn't go through a committee I'm on, and this is really my first opportunity to really discuss this in a public forum.
Right.
Or even offer an amendment, for that matter.
But it was open to all the members of the board, and the public, when we had public hearings on it.
I understand, but this is my first go-around, as far as being able to offer changes in a public manner.
Right. And unfortunately, today, an amendment wouldn't work.
Why is that?
Because today is called sign and die. And you can't hold a bill over because it dies.
But I can...
If you put an amendment on it.
Sure.
Basically, it kills the bill.
Sure. But I mean, that's, I mean, my constituents elected me to be able to follow through on procedure.
Okay. But I wouldn't support an amendment on this bill. And we, but however, what we can do, and what I'm committed to doing, is doing an amendment as it relates to Hispanic population on goods and services, because in the current bill there was an omission of Hispanic as far as 5% discounts on goods, not on the construction industry, but on goods and services. So I will be introducing a bill to amend that portion of this particular bill when it becomes an ordinance.
Will you take any other suggestions on your bill?
Sure. I'll take all suggestions. We'll have a public hearing on it.
I mean, as we should, or we have to. The, you know, just the data being so old is a concern. I don't know what, I wasn't here, I don't know what the holdup was for 15 years or whatever, 10 years, but I definitely find that to be a major concern. The other thing, which I don't, I understand is not the sponsors issue necessarily, is, I just want to go on the record, is here we are, St. Louis County is doing a similar legislation, and here we are, as a region, doing two separate things. So you cross one street as a developer, it's a completely different ballgame in the same metro area, and it's just, here we are again with no leadership on this from somebody, and again, I don't think that's you, but, I mean, we have partnerships dedicated to look at this, and somebody just sort of either didn't want to have the political courage or just didn't want to do it, and didn't want to say, "Hey, we really need to be looking at this," correct? Yes. However, many mayors, county execs, whatever, we've been through where, and I'm not talking about us having to do one study and even merge it, I'm just talking about we should, our legislation going forward with policies like this. This is the perfect example where the city and the county should at least have some dialogue going and saying, "Let's reflect one another, let's mirror one another on this."
Well, I would suggest we may have to look at ourselves before we do that, because when you think about liquor moratoriums, you can go across the street and there's a moratorium, but in this particular ward, on this side of the street, it's not. So before we go doing that, we may want to clean our own house.
I agree with you on that. All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 23rd?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I want to speak on it just briefly. In committee, which was actually in my committee, Jeffrey made changes to that bill. Everybody that came in, whether it was the Indians which had approached me, or the Spanish, everything was put in there that, you know, Jeffrey made concessions through the whole committee hearing. And maybe there should have been more concessions made, but it was at the committee hearings when everybody had that opportunity to speak up, and there were changes made. Jeffrey's also assured me that he's going to come back with some more concessions. I support the bill the way it is, and I take Jeffrey at his word that we're going to make changes in the next session.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 19th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It's always very easy to stand up at the 11th hour and talk about what should have, could have been done. But for me, and for others in this room, and I have to applaud Terry Kennedy and Sharon Tyus and others, because they've been working on this for years, and they get stonewalled every time for something that makes no common sense. So when the federal law came out and says, "This is how you can do it, this is what must be included in order for you to use certain numbers and have certain procedures in place," and then, of course, we've been serious about it for a while, most especially in our community, it was time to get serious about it. So I took it upon myself for the last year and a half to try to understand both sides. I want to thank the Associated General Contractors and union members, business owners throughout this region who have listened, who have come to the table. We have hammered things out, we have fussed at each other, and I'll put it nicely like that, but we've been working hard, okay? And for those, again, who come at the 11th hour with not much understanding, other than their personal benefits, whether it's from a paycheck or whatever, is not what we should be about today. We also talked among ourselves here at the city and said, "We can't point our fingers at the outside and tell them what they should do unless we improve our operations inside." That is taking place. Every day, it's getting better and better. We bought equipment to assist people to, in order for them to have the quantified information done in a proper, efficient manner. They've improved the Office of Minority Participation here with the city. The employees will assist people and guide them through processes and give them all the information they need to move forward. We have also gained support from our outside private community that does not have to report anything anytime if they don't want to. But they have come on board and said, "We will report everything we do, not just a project that might come with some incentives, but everything we do." So we've come a long, long way, and this is not the time for hesitation. The other part of this, too, is when we look at the numbers, and a lot of people misunderstood what the numbers meant. If your number is low, that means that you are receiving adequate work for your percentage of participation within our community. And what was interesting was, when I was sitting in the hearing, the gentleman said, "Well, I only have $40 million worth of work. I can't put five minority companies that are black and count them to have $40 million worth of work in an annual year. I can't count to five with that." So what they didn't understand was, the number was low because they had been doing well and receiving a lot of work. And it was obvious that women had not been receiving enough because their number went up even higher. So that meant we got to work harder to work with the women-owned businesses. So you see, you can talk about a lot of things, but until you get down and you get in the middle of it and you hear all of it, you don't understand it, you just want to have rhetoric. So today, I am very proud. We need to pass this. We're going to hold ourselves accountable for the future. It's going to require us to come back and look at this. We'll start looking at it again in 18 months, but it's in law, it's two years, but we'll start in 18 months. So we've got things to do. And I appreciate the Alderman from the 22nd ward taking this on. This is a challenge that we've had. We've had it go in so many different directions that we're just wrong, and we're finally going down the right path. So again, I am very, very happy to have my name on it as a sponsor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clark, please make note of that change. Add Alderman from the 19th as a co-sponsor to Board Bill 270 Committee substitute. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board. Talking to my esteemed colleague from the 18th, since we are old. Been here for this long fight. One of the things I hear people talk about is, "But it's not going to add to the workforce." Unfortunately, we wrote something about contractors, which is different than a workforce. And while we were down here, there was actually a Supreme Court case in which a black contractor got a contract and had all white workers. So the city fought him on it because, of course, the people who wrote this legislation never assumed that a black contractor would hire all white people. And that happens with white females, too. Her husband is really running it. So we know those are shadow kind of operations, but because of the way we had written the legislation, which you guys know, I'm always deaf on what it says, and there's a reason for that. So when it went to the Supreme Court, and I, if somebody, if you look it up, you'll find it, the Supreme Court said, "Absolutely. Long as he owned 51% of that company, he did not have to have any black workers." We were flabbergasted, okay? It's like, "Oh, my God." But again, how you write your laws make a difference. So there is a difference between contractors and workforce, and that is what the Alderman from the 22nd and the Alderman from the 18th and I were talking about, is that there is a different workforce development. And so those are two different things we attacked because we wrote the original legislation differently. Now, we might want to go look at the original legislation and change it, but the way we wrote it was about contractors. I want to say something that the Alderman from the 22nd and 19th, Alderman from 19th talked about, and that is, people not being able to find qualified black people or qualified women or qualified whatever, that always drives me crazy when somebody says that to me. One of the original people who said that to me was, when he was the lieutenant governor, and I was the chair of Black elected officials for the city of St. Louis, was Mayor Carnehan. And he said to me, "Sharon, I can't find any qualified black people for that," because we were on him about how many black people worked in his administration. And I said, "Lieutenant Governor, you need to fire all those people who are in charge of finding black people and women and hire me, because I'll find you all the qualified black people and women, because there are all kinds of qualified black people and women. And if you don't, here's the other thing, since you have been so good, and not you personally, white men have been so good at keeping people out, then be equally good at finding people and training them. If we have no workforce in that capacity, then do that. Okay, if we don't have any black ironworkers, help do that. Don't just say, "I want to keep all the work," because, I'm going to tell you, if you come to a committee, and I used to be on streets up until a year ago, I was on streets all the time I've been down here. There's nobody been on streets longer than me. And every time there was someone that came before the Streets Committee, and they would be all white men, and then I would say to them, "Do you believe in inclusion?" "Yes." And I would say, "I don't believe you, because visual means everything, and all I see is white men. I don't see any women, Hispanics, I see white men. So when you tell me you believe in inclusion, but you're going to come before me, a black woman, and you don't have anybody that looks like me, then I'm going to tell you, I don't believe you." Well, we had a hearing, and this was about trash, and maybe dumpster, it was something, I think it was trash, but anyway, the guy, a black guy came back, we came back, we went to lunch, came back, and he came back and he said, "Ms. Tyus, Ms. Tyus, I just want to tell you something." I said, "What?" He said, "I've been trying to get this promotion for the longest. I'm qualified, I can show you all this stuff." They would never give me it. And they said, "There's this black woman down there raising all this H-E-L-L, and so they hired me on the spot. I'm the new person now." I, my chest stuck out, because that's what my job is, okay? That is my job. I do not want to hear one more person tell me about what you can't find for qualified black people. That just means you're not looking, because there's qualified black people in anything you want to do, so that irritates me. And I was so proud, I want to say, I saw Gayle King on TV the other day, and she was talking about inclusion, and she was interviewing, who was she? Oh, Paul Ryan. And Paul Ryan, the Republicans, they recruit black people. In fact, in the state of Missouri, the head Republican, when you guys gerrymandered me and cheated my neighborhood, they came and said, "Sharon, you don't want to be a Democrat. Come on." And I mean, from the head Republican, Jim Talent, the whole people, they came to recruit me. And I said, "Nah, I'm going to just stay here, and I'm going to give that Democrats hell, because they're racist of what they're doing." But she said to Paul Ryan, "You guys keep saying you want black people, but there's a picture where all of you, white people, Donald Trump, Paul Ryan, Mitch McConnell, all white people, she said, "I don't see nobody that looks like me. I don't see anybody that's female." We, as black people and females, we have to challenge it every step, Hispanics, Asian Americans, Native Americans, we, that's our responsibility to challenge it. And not to hear, "Oh, I can't find any. Oh, there aren't any." Because my charge to you is if there aren't any, then help create a workforce and help create businesses and co-partner and teach people and mentor people, because this city is looking like South Africa. When we sit down here right now, we got 11 black Aldermen. We're supposed to have 15 black Aldermen. That's ridiculous. That's what South Africa looks like, when you don't even have proper representation. So you do not hear what you don't want to hear. But the fact of it is, is everybody's saying, "Well, this data is old." You need to look at the other data. You would be glad of what we're promoting and passing, because if you looked at the real data, you really wouldn't like how many black people are supposed to be including how many women. So stop trying to kick it down the line. It's been kicked, okay? It's been kicked, and it's time to do something. And I want to give the mayor of the city of St. Louis her props, her, because we have four men, two blacks and two whites, that kicked it down the road. It's time to pass this. It's been past, time to pass this. And again, I want to thank the sponsor and all the original sponsors, because we need this. And it will not be perfect, but we will create a better board bill or ordinance as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, please add my name to the bill as co-sponsor also. Alderman from the 18th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I've been officially anointed as a senior here in the board of Aldermen, by the Alderman from the first, but I appreciate it. I sponsored the original bill back in 1991. I was the sponsor. It took courage to be a black person among a sea of non-African-Americans to introduce such a legislation. We were, at that time, facing two different studies, one from the comptroller's office, the other from Mayor Shamo's office. The idea was to push something that had some teeth that an executive order did not. The executive order at that time clumped all minorities into one number. That number that clumped them all together still left a large disparity number for African-Americans. So that has been tried. We could not get that bill passed. The mayor at that time introduced a bill, had a bill introduced, and we, as the African-American Caucus, introduced a second bill with higher numbers and stronger teeth. That bill did not pass, nor did the mayor's bill pass. We were able to stop it at that particular time. Since then, there has not been the political will to do additional studies and to keep these studies current. Even though we have pushed various mayors throughout time to do something, it didn't happen until recently. And then we had to wrangle some money loose to be able to get this studied. So then, if the study is not as accurate as it could, not, that's not the word, is not as current as it could be, meaning that it wasn't finished yesterday, first of all, there is always a lapse when a study is done to the time that you actually create the legislation. That takes time. But secondly, we were dealing with a political climate that was actually opposed to getting this thing done. So getting this far in that climate has taken a whole lot of political courage and a whole lot of political pushing to get to this point. There is no attempt to disenfranchise any minority whatsoever. The idea is to ensure that there is fairness and that the city of St. Louis can really deal with equity, equity which, in my opinion, it has never seen since its inception as a city colonized by the French, using Africans as free labor in this city and in this state. Now we've come to this point, and we say, "Let's wait some more. Let's push this down a little bit further." How long? We don't want to wait anymore. How much longer? We don't want to take any longer. There is no perfect piece of legislation. I don't believe any of us have seen it. That means then certainly there are some issues that could be strengthened in this bill, but is it a good bill? Certainly it is. We could come back next session as the sponsor has, where is he at? Where the sponsor has said he would do, and to make changes. All bills, all pieces of legislation are massaged and refined as they go down the road. Political courage? Oh, yes, there's been a lot of political courage. There's been political courage to have a conversation with the county. We have spoken consistently with the sponsor of the bill there. It just so happens, for a change, the City of St. Louis is at the cutting edge of something positive, as opposed to something negative. That means, that means that the city was ahead of the county and the bills that they were creating. But St. Louis is a different entity in itself. It has a greater diversity of ethnic groups, a greater diversity of people here than we actually see in the county. So sometimes the city is the leader in a hotbed of development that we don't see in the county. But there has been conversations with the counties, just for a change, St. Louis is ahead of the curve in this region. I would suggest that the Alderwoman who wants to make changes, that she brings it back in the next session. She has heard a familiar, she has heard a willingness to work with her on it. Let's do it. But it's my understanding, in terms of the law, you cannot retroactively pass a piece of legislation and call somebody to do something or to change what they did back in 1916. You cannot do that. So the concern about causing developers to have to go back and correct what they did should not be a concern, because that is not legal.
Yeah.
So that, really, we can kind of end that argument, because that is not the case. Now, as African-Americans, we certainly have seen some real grandfathering, where they used to say that if our grandfather didn't vote, we couldn't vote. That's grandfathering, but that's not doing this. Y'all know what I'm talking about during Reconstruction, when they said that if your grand, we know, not one of our grandfathers or grandmothers voted in 1870. So that meant none of us can vote. We know about grandfathering, because of what America has done to us. But that's not what is happening here. What is happening here is an attempt to make sure that there is equity in the City of St. Louis. Now, you know, I could really get on my high horse here. And let's be clear, Hispanic is a cultural and a linguistic group. It is not a race. There are white Hispanics like Rubio. There are black Hispanics. There are Native American Hispanics. And there are Creole Hispanics, meaning a combination of all the two, white and African-American, Native American and white, African-American and Native American. There was a white woman from Spain who wrote a note from Mexico, says that the worst kind of person you could ever see in your life was a combination of an African and a Native American in Mexico. Be clear, it is not a race. It is a linguistic and a cultural group. That means that there are black Hispanics, from Cuba, from Dominican Republic, from Puerto Rico, all here in the City of St. Louis. The attempt is also to make sure that they are covered in this bill, both as an ethnic or cultural group, as well as a racial group. So lots of attempt, a lot of study, a lot of work has been on this bill. Can it be refined? Most certainly. So then, we collectively, those who consider themselves on the side of racial and gender equity, let us work together on this, instead of trying to shoot holes in it and saying it is not the most perfect thing. You didn't wake up this morning, when you woke up this morning, the world wasn't perfect. So let us get together and work on this together, as opposed to trying to find ways to shoot it down, when we had been working on this thing for decades. Now, we should not be concerned about the issue of workforce. I too sponsor the workforce bill. There is a workforce bill that says there has to be so many African-American workers. There has to be so many women workers. There have to be other minority group workers on projects that the city gives incentives to of a million dollars or more. We also included in that, that there must be so many city workers on these projects, and still further, there must be so many apprentices, because the construction industry, which is dominated by white males, are now aging. And the whole idea is to take advantage of the fact that younger whites are not going into this area, and to ensure that we get women and that we get minorities into this position, so in that bill is also an apprenticeship number. We are trying, you all. We're doing some stuff here in the City of St. Louis. We're working on these things. So then, we do not have to kill this bill today. Let's pass it and continue to work on it and refine it. You have a commitment from the sponsor that he is willing to do this, and the rest of us are right there with him to make sure that it happens. So the question becomes, do we trust enough of each other to work on this together? That really becomes the question. Not whether we're trying to keep some minority group from participating in this, we, the group that has suffered more than anybody in this country, we don't have to get into that, I'm sorry, to an extent I said it. But there are some significant differences between African-Americans and other minorities. We went through slavery. We were free chattled workers for this country. And no one had any counselors when we were done, or any social programs when it was over with. And so then, America has continued to benefit from that free labor until 2018. This is simply an attempt to bring some equity to that tragedy that America has placed upon people of color, particularly those of African descent. So the question is, do we trust enough of each other? Now, some of you are new, and we could say, those of us that have been here, we could say, why should we trust you? Because you knew. And you could come in and say, well, I knew, why could I trust you? Because you old. I'm not that old, y'all, but you can say that. Then that means we both have to take a step towards each other. We both have to put that to a side and take a step to each other. We can find enough reasons why not to work together. So then, since we can, that's easy to do, then let us consciously find enough reasons to work together. That means we have to come together, we have to stop some things that we're doing now, put it to the side and say, I'm going to take this opportunity to work with you. Now, you may prove me wrong, and you may stab us in the back, but it's better to at least try than to say, as our elders used to say, I wish I coulda, I shoulda. It's better to at least say, well, at least we tried on a number of occasions. So I'm saying to you, let's try it on this one. After you hearing the history that this was first introduced in back 1991, and there had not been a political will to get us to this place until we're here today, well, let's work on this together now. We, as a caucus, are taking a step to you. Will you take a step to us? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize the close.
I think my co-sponsor from the 18th will have done a phenomenal job in closing this out. Mr. President, I would like to ask that it get its most favorable consideration on a roll call vote.
All right. It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from 23rd, that we perfect Board Bill Number 270, Committee Substitute. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Kotar.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Bulmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderman Rhodey. You have 27 aye votes, Mr. President.
By vote, you stand motion of Alderman from the 22nd and perfected Board Bill Number 270, Committee Substitute after a whole lot of years. Congratulations, Alderman, and everybody who's worked on this bill since the early 90s. Congratulations. Alderman from 22nd, you recognize on the motion to suspend.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of putting Board Bill 270 Committee Substitute on the third reading calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 14th. It's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Clerk, please place Board Bill Number 270 Committee Substitute on the third reading consent calendar. And Alderwoman from the first, thanks for all your years of work on that bill, too. I know you all were here a lot longer before we all were here, and you've been fighting the fight, so congratulations on you all getting that done.
Board Bill 265, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, pursuant to Ordinance 68937, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Pastor Benny Lee Thompson Senior Avenue to begin at the intersection of Webster and Sheridan and run east on Sheridan to the intersection of Sheridan and North Garrison. Board Bill 267, sponsored by Alderman Moore, pursuant to Ordinance 68937, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street naming Frankie Muse Freeman Boulevard to begin at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and North Sarah and run east on Lincoln to the intersection of Lincoln and Bishop P.L. Scott Avenue. Board Bill 269, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Iowa and Juniata, regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Iowa at Juniata, and regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Juniata at Iowa and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 271, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Alderman Boyd, pursuant to Ordinance 68937, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Norman R. Say Avenue to begin at the intersection of Thomas and Webster and run south on Webster to the intersection of Webster and James Cool Papa Bell. Board Bill 171, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Spencer, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Green, and Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance, an ordinance to revise Ordinance 68610 approved March 16, 2010 pertaining to a semi-annual registration fee of $200 for certain buildings and structures by removing the fee exemption for property subject to a specific redevelopment agreement with the City of St. Louis and its development agencies. Board Bill 206, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 5122-24 Kensington area. Board Bill 220, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the Locust Jefferson Avenue area. Board Bill 239, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance recommended by the planning to change the zoning of property in City Block 2485 from G Local Commercial and Office District to B Two-Family Dwelling District at 4231-41 North Grant and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 262AA, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance affirming adoption of the City Foundry St. Louis RPA 2 Redevelopment Plan, the RPA 2 Redevelopment Area and the RPA 2 Redevelopment Project authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and FOPA for the City Foundry St. Louis RPA 2 Redevelopment Project designating FOPA partners as developer of the RPA 2 Redevelopment Area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 222, as amended, sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Mohammed, and Alderman Arnowitz, an ordinance directing the Public Safety Director to complete an annual public safety plan and present the findings of the plan to members of the Board of Aldermen and the Board of Aldermen Public Safety Committee. Board Bill 204AA, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1020 Union 5251 Kates. Board Bill 266, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 215 York. Board Bill 40, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, an ordinance adding language to Ordinance 62101 that will prohibit the Parking Violation Bureau from doubling a parking meter and parking violation fine if payment is received within 20 calendar days or less. If an appeal of the fine occurs either through an administrative or state court where the appellant is found guilty, the fine will not double if payment is received within 10 or less calendar days. Board Bill 34, Committee Substitute, or, I'm sorry. Board Bill 254, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1301 Union. Board Bill 264, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3450 Wisconsin. That is the extent of third reading consent calendar, Mr. President.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Clark, please move Board Bill 262, as amended, to the regular third reading calendar, after requested, Alderman from the first.
Okay. So noted.
262, as amended, from the consent to the regular third reading calendar.
So noted.
To the end of the regular third reading calendar. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from 26th. Any discussion? Madam, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, please, call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Kotar.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Bulmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderman Rhodey. Mr. President, you have 27 aye votes.
By vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the 18th, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossments.
Board Bill 233, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Mohammed, Alderwoman Hubbard, President Reed, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Cohn, Alderwoman Ingracia, and Alderwoman Navarro. An ordinance amending Ordinance 69984, which established the St. Louis Civilian Oversight Board to empower the Civilian Oversight Board to issue subpoenas to compel the appearance of witnesses, produced documents, recordings, and other evidence which the COB determines in its reasonable judgment are relevant and necessary to its thorough inspection and review of complaints of misconduct by members of the St. Louis Police Department, which may be subject to civilian oversight board independent investigation.
Alderwoman from the 27th, you recognize on the third reading and finally passage of Board Bill Number 233.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for third reading and final passage of Board Bill 233.
Moved by Alderman from 27, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd.
I need a motion. I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 8th.
Could you please add my name as a co-sponsor?
Mr. Clark, please make note of that. Alderwoman from the 1st.
Members of the board, another thing we've been working on for a long time, I tell you. But, so I already told my friend, I'm at a present now. I was at a definite no last time, because there were lies being told about how you could not add subpoena power. What does this bill have? Didn't change a law, subpoena power is here. But why I'm not voting yes is because there's still, there's still work for this, for this to be an independent body. We do need to not have the mayor appoint all the people. If you give subpoena power to all the mayor's final appointees, you still haven't got there. People will say, why do you raise this? I used to actually be in a practicing attorney and so when you do subpoena power, you want to have it so that it's an independent thing. So when the mayor has the final say, that's not an independent body. I also have several other things that I would like to see and I'm going to give them to the sponsor of this bill, so one of the sponsors. I would love to see because in the bill, we don't really give immunity to the people who sit on that board, so I'm kind of concerned that we have a board in which people serve us and we don't protect them from lawsuits. I want to see, I asked the sponsor earlier about a budget and I was told that there has been subsequently added some budget line items. I want to see that. But more than anything, and I don't say that the mayor can't have some appointees, I want the majority of the people on that board to be something that's independent. The reason that the current mayor is staffing all these different boards with her people is because they do what the mayor wants them to do and that is not an independent body and that is what we are seeking. So it is a great, great thing that we are doing subpoena power. I don't know if you all saw this, but over our break, they wrote a story about the Civilian Review Board and said how that they all but one time agreed with internal affairs. The reason why that is, is because internal affairs also controlled what information they got or not, but also again, because whose appointing them? So if we really want to see innovative things done, if we want to see independent people, then we have to appoint a different way, elect or something else, the people. So for that reason, I will just, the board members rather, for that reason, I will not be voting yes, but I will be voting present because that is a step in the right direction, but it is not an independent board and that is what you need. And countries around, cities around the country have thrown these out and gone back to the drawing board to do it the correct way. Chicago being the name that comes first, they threw theirs out because having Ron Emanuel and appoint these people is not independent. They're going to say the same thing and they're going to try to do what the people appoint them. So we have a more independent body, we get a more independent outcome. I do still want to thank the sponsors and the people who have moved it along without that change in law that they said that we had to have a couple of years ago. So I appreciate the progress and I hope you come back with our new session starts tomorrow and we come back with something that even makes it even more of the body that we look forward to. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Roll call.
Okay. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 27th, you recognize close.
I recognize close the bill and renew the motion.
All right, it's been moved by Alderwoman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderwoman from the 27th, seconded by Alderwoman from the 22nd that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number 233. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracchia.
Aye.
Alderman Kotar.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Volmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohen.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Martin. Mr. President, you have 23 aye votes, two noes and two present.
By vote, you stay.
Three nos. Or two nos, I'm sorry.
Is it two or three?
Yes, it's two.
You guys are conferred, so read the count back to me one more time.
It's 23 aye votes, two no votes and two present.
By vote, you stay in the motion, Alderwoman from the 27th and third read and finally pass Board Bill number 233. You have 262 as amended.
Board Bill 262 as amended sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance affirming adoption of the City Foundry St. Louis RPA 2 Redevelopment Plan, the RPA 2 Redevelopment Area and the RPA 2 Redevelopment Project authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and FOPA for the City Foundry St. Louis RPA 2 Redevelopment Project designating FOPA partners as developer of the RPA 2 Redevelopment Area and containing a severability clause.
Alderwoman from the 19th, you recognize on third reading and final passage of Board Bill number 262 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to finally pass Board Bill 262 as amended.
Second.
Been moved by Alderwoman from the 19th, seconded by Alderwoman from the 25th that we third read and final pass Board Bill number 262 as amended. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
Board, I rise to oppose this legislation. I've been ongoing for years, even before most any of these people down here, about how we do the TIFs and the tax abatements in certain parts of the city. I am especially happy to see that the state of Missouri is actually taking some action. I'm actually going to go up there, I have lots of information to provide them. It is totally ridiculous, especially from not the person who is doing it, but the person who is sponsoring it, since he has talked about all this TIF things that he's going to do and that he's going to clean it up and he has more TIFs and tax abatements than everybody in the city and there is a map of the city of St. Louis about development and if you look at that map, you will feel embarrassed as to where all the money is going. And the argument that the Alderman made, I wish he was here, was that, well, look how good we're doing. Well, I guess you are, all the money's going in your ward. Before you gerrymandered and cheated my people, we were doing it without tax abatements. We were doing that. And then, once that got tore up, we didn't get that done anymore. There's ways to do development without giveaway and there has to be a point, a tipping point where you say, this is too much in certain areas. And I'm not just talking about wards, I'm talking about areas. When everything is a tax abatement, a TIF, an incentive, and there's a lot of the cities that's not getting anything, and this was supposed to be done for people to incentivize and to get those things done where people could not get them done. There is something called a but-for test. But for this TIF, it would not get done. We have made a joke of that but-for test. It was not supposed to be so the rich and the richer could have more and more and more. It was to make sure that all parts of the city was developed. When you look at this map and you look at that one ward has more development than the rest of the city and then Central Quarter has all the development and the places that should be using this development is not happening, it is again, a lack of leadership from Room 200 because what should have been was an order that says anything, only a certain percentage that comes from certain areas will get through. This is how much you can use TIF and tax abatement and the rest of it has to go to parts of the city that needs it. And if that occurred, then you would have development going on where it's supposed to, okay? You also, by doing this illegal racist gerrymandering, you took my community out of being third in seniority and we're 12 in seniority, so it doesn't just hurt Sharon Tyus. And so that was, that you stopped all that development that was going on up and down Natural Bridge. The only part of Natural Bridge that is developed hardly is the part that's in the old 20th Ward, now called the First Ward. But if we keep giving all this away, at some point, it's going to stop and Alderman from the 17th is going to talk about what a great job he did giving the whole city away at the expense so that he could have something in the 17th Ward and a few other wards at the expense of the Third and the 20th or the, and the 20th which is South St. Louis now, but the First, the Second, all these wards in North St. Louis should be getting development. We are not getting it or we're getting small amounts or we hear, well, look, NGA. NGA, what about the people in my community who are homeowners, who own and pay their taxes and they pay all their taxes? They're not getting any benefit from NGA, okay? That is a benefit for a small amount of people and it's a large benefit. If we are actually ever going to do development correct, we have to stop adding more incentive on top of more incentive on top of more incentive to say, well, we couldn't get it done, we just add a little bit more and a little bit more and a little bit more and we stop having to be hypocrites to talking about how we're going to reform it and we're actually the person taking advantage of it the most. The Alderman from the 17th is a hypocrite and he has taken advantage of it the most when he's saying he's trying to reform it and he needs to stop that and we need to stop him and we're hypocrites when we say we need it and then we keep going on with this because he's the chair and he can hold my bills, okay? Then hold the bills, but out him. And if he can't be out it, I cannot believe that I am happy that the Republican administration at the state is doing something that will stop us crazy Democrats down here from just throwing the city away.
All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 23rd.
Just a, just a comment. I actually agree with a lot of what the Alderwoman from the first said and we do need to change what we're doing. I'm going to vote for this because I hadn't said otherwise prior, but I would encourage the Alderwoman from the first to put something together. I'd love to help with that. I'd love to have it put into legislation, which is my committee, on how we're doing this because this is something that I've spoke against myself. We're, as a city, we're going broke and I don't know other people's areas, but we do need to have some way of figuring out what, where the stuff should be going and how we slow it down. I do plan to vote for this, but I would like to work with the Alderwoman from the first to, and ask the, Lewis, if you'd please put whatever we come up with into legislation so we can come up with something that's reasonable.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further, Alderwoman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I am in agreement with most of what the Alderwoman from the first ward said. There's one thing that I want to add also that I think, due to the moment in time that we're in, is important to bring up. The lead tenant for this is Alamo Drafthouse. Alamo Drafthouse is a company right now that has multiple lawsuits up and down, up and down its executive management with regards to sexual harassment. And I think that if we are supporting projects as a city, especially with foregoing tax dollars, that we really need to be cognizant of the types of companies that we are supporting. And over and over again, they have shown that they have not been responsive and have mismanaged claims of sexual harassment. So for that, among other reasons, I will be voting no.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 19th, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion.
All right, it's been moved by Alderwoman from the 19th, seconded by Alderwoman from the 25th that we third read and final pass Board Bill number 262 as amended. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohen. Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Mr. President, you have 19 aye votes, four noes, two present and two abstain.
By vote, you stay in the motion, Alderwoman from the 19th and third read and finally You still have Board Bills 230, I mean 270 and 34.
Board Bill, Board Bill 34 committee substitutes sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman Green and Alderman Cohen. An ordinance facilitating safe passage to and from a healthcare facilities and prohibiting activities near certain facilities and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the 6th, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill number 34.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Just want to refresh everyone's memory since it's been a few weeks since we've discussed this. This is a bill that has been carefully constructed and narrowly tailored to adhere to Supreme Court decisions that have been made in Colorado and Massachusetts and also modeled off local legislation in other places. There is a balance of constitutional rights here. One is the right for free speech, which we want to be able to respect. The other is a right for women to access healthcare.
Alderwoman, let me slow you down a little bit. Recognize you for a motion for...
I should start with that, Sharon.
Yes, yes. You were on a good roll, but...
I appreciate the slowdown. I move that we, third read and finally pass Board Bill 34 committee substitute.
Been moved by Alderwoman from the 6th, entertained second, seconded by Alderwoman from the 15th. Alderwoman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. At any rate, I know there's been some conversation in the weeks that we took a break with respect to the calls for service at the police department and I think there's just some misinformation going around. The calls for service that I pulled from the police department have been testified to by former major, now police chief Hayden, the community outreach officer that's assigned to the Central West End and the Forest Park Planned Parenthood Clinic, as well as numbers backing up. So some of the calls for service look like self-initiated activity. It's the same calls for service that we use in regulation with problem properties and nuisance meetings in the police department all the time. And so I just wanted to clear, clear that piece up. I think there are two different lists of calls for service going around that look a little bit different than each other, but contain mostly the same information. I also think it's really smart for us all to remember that there's been a wide coalition of folks who have really been thoughtful and methodical about bringing this to the table here at the board. We had the ACLU, Black Lives Matter demonstrators, women's reproductive health organizations and a number of other parties to make sure that we are being as narrow and intentional with respect to this, this bill as possible. And so with that, I renew my motion and ask for your favorable consideration on this
Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, if Alderwoman from the 6th would yield.
Alderwoman from the 6th will yield to Alderwoman from the first.
I will.
Alderwoman... Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
So I kind of was trying to understand what you said about the mistake in the calls for service. Can you explain that again? I didn't understand what you were saying.
Sure. I think the list that was being sent around subsequent to the lists that were provided by the police department and testified to by the police department did not include self-initiated activity and did not include information on calls, multiple calls being made for similar events.
So when you say self-initiated, you mean that Planned Parenthood called? What do you mean by self-initiated?
No, that the police department decided that there was a reason that they needed to stop and do a check-in there.
Okay, so part of your calls were the police just decided that they would stop and do a check-in?
It's the same calls for service that we use for all of our nuisance property processes here in the city.
And was the Planned Parenthood address at either Forest Park or South Rand identified as a nuisance property?
The Planned Parenthood is not currently on the nuisance list.
Okay, so then why were, if it's the same self-check-in, can you tell me why the police were doing a self-initiation?
I can't speak on behalf of the police department. The other issue that we had was that there's a community outreach officer who gives out his cellphone number, his personal cellphone number to people, so we don't know the calls for service to that number either.
Okay, and so you don't know why they were stopping by, but when they stopped by, what was the outcome? Since you said they were self-initiated, what was the outcome of these kind of self-initiations?
You would have to look at the, or I guess to speak to the police department, there's no reports on self-initiated activity.
Okay, so, but you were counting that as a call for service?
I counted it as a call for service because that's how the police department counts it as a call for service.
And there's a lot of things the police department do that I do not agree with.
Sure.
And one of them is, that is not a call for service. If you're just driving by, you're policing, sure enough, but nobody has called you and said there was an incident going on. Now, they may do that. They also believed it was okay to pepper spray people out there protesting and many other things, and cattle people and kettle people. So I'm not going to say what they do is the right thing or that they follow the law. Now, you said that, and I have to not call him Major Hayden anyway, Commander, is that what he is? He's a commander because he's not a police chief. Is it Commander? Commissioner, that's what it is, thank you. Commissioner Hayden testified, did he testify at a hearing to these calls, at the hearing that you had?
He testified at a hearing, yes, with respect to the calls for service for 2015 and 2016, I believe.
And was that in the, was this in the legislative committee? You say you testified at the...
Public safety.
Public safety, he testified at the public safety committee?
Yes.
That that was the correct amount?
Right.
And that he testified that he counted officer-initiated calls as calls for service?
He just testified as to the number of calls for service.
Okay, because I will be talking to him because that is not a call for service at all. And you were starting to say that there was a fair, there was a fair amount of people that had input into this legislation and there was a balancing of a First Amendment right versus what?
A woman's right to access healthcare.
Okay, and so you, it is your contention that a woman does not have right to access healthcare if someone is out passing out literature or shouting or whatever it is that they do or being an activist against it, because, and what I call them is anti-choice people.
Right. Well, I'm not an attorney, but I do know that there's something that the Supreme Court discusses called the unwilling listener doctrine, as well...
I'm sorry, you said that what?
The unwilling listener doctrine, as well as a right to access legal healthcare.
Almost everybody I know, somebody's protesting and they're unwilling to hear most of the times, okay? You could take that every place, even down here. So what is your understanding of the Supreme Court's unwilling listener doctrine?
It's my understanding that based on the conversations I've had with a handful of attorneys and all of the stakeholders I mentioned earlier at the table, that we have struck a smart balance between protecting people's demonstration rights and free speech rights with the rights of women to access healthcare unimpeded.
Okay, and that's there, because these are all people for it, okay? So of course they would say that. But what Supreme Court case verifies that that's what we've done?
There's a Supreme Court case out of Massachusetts, McCully, that we looked at, that was struck down, and then Hill v. Colorado, which was upheld.
And were both of them about, about a buffer zone?
Yes.
And both of them were upheld by the U.S. Supreme Court?
No. McCully was struck down, and so we took the language of the opinions of the justices with respect to what they thought was not constitutional, and then took the pieces of McCully that were upheld, as well as looking at laws that were passed subsequent to McCully and Hill decisions at the local municipal level.
Okay, so what language, can you remember, what was in there that McCully struck down? Do you know?
I don't feel like I am the best person to speak with specificity on the intricacies of Supreme Court decisions. That's why I relied on the city councilor, our attorney at the board, attorneys for Planned Parenthood and NARAL.
What decisions from, was it Hill that you said that were kept in that you felt that was legal? And is that the eight-foot buffer?
Right. We felt that the eight-foot buffer was a smart distance so that people would still be allowed to get across their message if they were choosing to demonstrate, but that would allow for the driveway to be accessible.
And so did you go out to all the, so this doesn't just affect Planned Parenthood, this also affects all healthcare facilities, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so in doing that, did you go out and look at the practicality of when you say eight-foot, how it affects certain parts?
We did speak to the nurses' union in the area because they do demonstrating sometimes at hospitals. I would have preferred to have just the healthcare facility at Planned Parenthood be addressed, but there is also another Supreme Court issue with respect to content neutrality.
Right. Okay, so as I said before, I was, I'm specifically talking about the Planned Parenthood's one. So when you look at eight-foot at Forest Park, which is what, which I go by all the time, I used to live south, so I went by the south side one, but now I've been north for a lot of years. So when you talk about eight feet from the driveway?
From the center of the driveway.
Right. You're pretty much putting them at the corner boil in the middle, is that right?
I would disagree with that.
What would you think?
I've measured, I've measured it, yeah.
And where do you think it goes to?
It does not go near the corner.
It doesn't go near the corner, eight feet? Yes, it does. Okay, you actually went out and...
It's the center of the driveway, not the end of the driveway, just want to be clear about that.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying the center of the, so the driveway is no, I don't know, about five foot something or something like that, so you would have...
It's wider than that.
I would say the driveway is about five, between five and six feet, but okay. So you're, the center of the driveway to the, so you're saying that the driveway is what?
I don't, I think it's about 10 or 15 feet.
So 10 feet, so you're saying five, but it's from the center, so five foot would be the driveway. So you're saying five, four more feet, because, no, it's not nine, it's three, three more feet would be away from the driveway.
Right. Right now, there are people who are able to and have reached in cars, blocked the driveway for cars, trying to access the area, and so...
I'm telling you, so I go by that every, almost every day. I've just never seen that. I went in myself. I've never seen them block the driveway. It must be a mysterious time because I truly am supportive of people having their own choices and spoke up and supported them. But when you keep saying this, I, so I go by more, it's like, let me, you know, I'm calling people and saying, "I'm driving by here again," and that just has never been my instance. So do they have cameras outside these facilities?
They have cameras, and I have made available to the public safety committee. We can't put, I was asked to put them up on YouTube. We cannot do that, videos from Planned Parenthood that illustrate exactly what I'm talking about. We have years' worth of escort reports that define problems. We have the police calls for service. We have the Planned Parenthood employees themselves, patients, and then the police department all saying that this is what they would like to see to make sure that people are safe exiting and entering the building.
Okay, and so you say couldn't put it up on YouTube, but you could have sent it to various Aldermen?
I made that available, but I was not going to send it online. I have it on my computer.
But you, how did you make it available to the...
I told them if they wanted to see it, I had it.
Okay, but you didn't tell it to the rest of the Aldermen who had to vote for it or vote against it?
I did not, no.
Okay. And so when I hear this calls for service in which, so when my community hears that the police actually stop in and try to stop stuff, that ought to put fear in the current public safety director's heart because he's a constituent of mine, been for many, many years. And there's a little store right at the corner that he himself has screamed and hollered about with me and a lot of other people. And it's amazing how the police has time to go and just make sure everything is hunky-dory over there, but they don't have time for the store where they have shootings all the time, okay? All the time, I mean, several. It's a wonder how the police do their policing because I'm just like, what? When you're talking about calls for service are that the police actually stop by and make sure everything's all right? How does one get that kind of policing? Guess you have to be in the right side of town because it sure is not the policing that I get in my community. That's real interesting to me. And then when you say that you call calls for service, which on its very essence is calls for service, and then say, "But if the police stop by, that's a call for service." Whoever does that, that's bull. That is not a call for service. That is policing that everybody wishes that they had. And if they say, "Well, we know we have problems here, so we're stopping by," that's not a call for service. So I tend to agree with the people who I don't agree with about abortion rights and not, and that that is not a call for service. True calls for service is when I pick up the phone or the person who is at the Planned Parenthood or wherever picks up the phone and says, "Hey, we're having a problem, come in." If a police is just stopping by, that is not a call for service. That is ridiculous to even call it that. Thank you. I have no further questions for the Alderwoman from the 6th. I do have some further comments.
Please proceed.
I just have no more further questions.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, I stand in opposition to this board bill. I heard the people from Planned Parenthood were in my office when they talked about this. They asked me to be a co-sponsor. I told them then, got a lot of problems with this. I told them about my concern about people's right to protest. And so one of the things that I hear all the time, and I think that people do not hear themselves and do not see long-term consequences, is when you yourself have been protesting and then now you say, "But we want to curtail somebody else's right to protest," okay? Very famous case in the city of St. Louis is the KKK was coming here earlier and First Black Mayor, Freeman Bosley, was saying he didn't want them to come, and I took the position, yes, they absolutely could come. And people said, "How can you say that?" I can say that because if the NAACP can protest, then so can the KKK. Do I like their context of speech? No. Do I like what they stand for? Hell, no. But what I do know is that when you don't protect other people's rights, they come back to bite you, okay? There's another case that happened with the bays, the city of St. Louis. A judge told the bays that they had to take their fez off. The Jewish people came to their defense and showed up because the Jewish people understood that if you tell the bays that they can't wear theirs, then they can't wear theirs too. So the nuns should have showed up too. That's what happens to people when you chop at people's rights, that you also chop at other rights, and then when it comes back and it's something else, you go, "But, but what about me?" I can't tell you the number of times I heard about people calling me and writing me, because I've got more emails on this, which I keep telling people, "I am pro-choice. I'm just not for this bill. Stop telling me about what your position is because that's not what making me decide." What makes me decide is I don't believe that this is a valid right to say, "I don't want to hear this. I don't want to see this. I don't want people to tell me." Making the choice about your abortion, that should be, or not to have one, that is a personal choice. But once you make it, there are always going to be people, and people a lot closer to you that probably will have something to say, your parents, your grandparents, your uncles, your aunts. If all those people find out about it and they don't convince you, I do not understand how strangers in the street, if I was going to have an abortion or procedure, I would not care two cents what somebody out on the street was saying, and I would not think, and I don't even get this, that somebody out on the street is where I should be signing in. And again, I asked the question last time, couldn't Planned Parenthood just put up a sign that says, "You do not have to sign in here"? That would let everybody know, those are the protesters, okay? Or you put somebody out there saying, "These are protesters." But when you start to chip at the right of people to protest and say they don't want to hear what you have to say, I think that chips at a basic fundamental right, and it's very, very few things that I would say it's okay to chip at the right of the First Amendment. Now, I will agree that when you get to things like saying, "Fire!" in a theater, the Supreme Court has said that is a valid right to say you can't yell, "Fire!" because that's a public safety. But this whole thing that we say about, "Don't want to hear what you have to say, don't like that you don't believe in abortion, you want to counsel people right up to the front door," I think it's absolutely vital that we keep that right, be pro-choice, anti-choice, and for that reason, not because I'm anti-choice, but for, I think it's a more vital reason to keep the right to protest for all those people. Because of course I heard all about the people who were in the middle of the highway, all on the, you know, they wanted to make it that personal. And I say, "That is not about those people. For me, it's about the right to protest." Now, I've had people picket my house, Cleo was picking my house before. We laughed and came out there and gave the people Pepsis and stuff, and then they said, "Cleo, we not going to stay here and left," okay? There's a way you deal with protesters, okay? You don't always have to, it doesn't have to, even though they may be adversarial to you, you do not have to be. He never came back again because I co-opted his people, okay? So there are things that you can do. And then sometimes you just don't agree with people, and that's okay. They came on my place, the people on my place don't like that. So they're not that kind of people. So, but I put up with it, explained it to it, apologized to my neighbors. I did, I don't necessarily want people in front of my house, but they didn't do what they did. And I think what they did, whoever did damage to the mayor's house, that's wrong, and I'm not for that. But the right to protest to your government or about things you don't like is, I think is a fundamental right that we have to step very carefully, and it has to be very much of a public safety issue for me to vote for that. And for that reason, I am opposed to this. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Would the honorable Alderwoman from the 6th yield for questioning?
Alderwoman from the 6th will yield for questions.
I will.
Alderman from the 12th, please proceed.
Thank you, Alderwoman. So I remember in the public safety meeting, the calls for service, and I understand, if I remember, I'm getting old, but a lot of calls for service was to the police officer's cellphone.
That's correct.
So when I, and my constituents' calls for service, you know, I tell them to call 911 or 231. So, and there's a lot of dispersion here on amount of calls which were actually calls and weren't calls. So I just think that's something we need to really dig and find out. We didn't have anything to watch in that hearing. So, you know, God, and I'm all for women's rights and doing the right thing, but I think the problem here is, it sounds like we're mixing the bag. So people who protest and block streets and intersections say they should be able to, but now we're saying you can't, you know, be here and hand these pamphlets out, you know? And then we've seen the people who are just, let's be ignorant or whatever, and drive through and hit people, and we don't want stuff like that happen. I mean, I think we have to have a balance here, so we either have to do things and force it all the same way, or either, you know, let's do other things. I didn't even know that we were talking about other healthcare facilities. I thought it was just this one. And without talking to us or coming to the meeting, that's a first for me. So, and I mean, I don't know if it's the right thing to do, maybe, you know, let's hold this bill to a new session and work on some things, maybe change the footage of the buffer zone. I mean, I haven't been out there, know exactly where the center line is, how wide it is or anything, but, you know, if I'm driving through somewhere and I don't want to be bothered just like people at the streetlights with their hands out.
Point of order.
I just ignore them.
Please state your point of order.
The Alderman asked for me to yield for questions. I'm just wondering if there's a question.
Oh, yes, there is. Yes, there is, Mr. President. So I'm just saying, so my question to you is, would you be willing to just to hold this bill to a new session and we can bring everybody back to the tables and just sit down and talk, and I'm sure we can get it worked out?
I can amend the bill similarly to the Alderman minority and women on business participation. I can commit to that, a discussion about whether or not there need to be amendments.
So I mean, basically, yes. I mean, I'm just asking that we hold this bill today and come back in a new session. Let's do it right, is all I'm asking. But thank you for your time, and I do appreciate what you do.
Sure thing.
All right. Alderman from the 23rd.
I just a comment. The Alderwoman said that it's from the center of the driveway when the bill clearly states that it... that it's within the public way of the sidewalk, within eight feet of any portion of such facilities' driveways. So it's not from the center of the driveways, it's from... Did you read this?
I did.
Okay.
Alderman, would you like?
I know, I was...
Would you like her to yield for questions?
No, that, I just wanted to make sure that that was stated, that's all.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 15th.
Hello? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Just one thing to, I guess, comment on something that the Alderman from the 11th said, 12th, sorry. When we block streets or we block highways, we know that we are breaking a law. It's called civil disobedience. And we know that we could be cited for it, we know that we could be put in jail from it. People are making a choice to break the law when that happens. I think what a lot of us are asking is for folks to be held to the same standard, that laws be put in place, that if they are impeding access of other folks to get to a healthcare facility, that they are held to that same standard, and that there is the ability to be ticketed, or there is the ability, you know, for some kind of repercussion to disincentivize doing that. So I think this is very consistent. Second thing I wanted to say is, I asked it to be printed, but it hasn't been printed yet. But if anybody Googles Planned Parenthood on their computer, the Forest Park facility, what comes up is actually a picture that shows you how many cars can park alongside where that, where the entrance to the driveway is. There are four parking spaces. We know that each car is about three feet, three and a half feet wide. And so this is not pushing people all the way back to the curb, all the way back to the corner. It's pushing them about one car length, one and a half car lengths away, not the long way of the car, but the short, you know, if you're looking at a car front way, back from where that, where the entrance to the driveway is. So, you know, I definitely support First Amendment rights, also think that people have an ability, or should have an ability, to access healthcare without intimidation. I have driven to Planned Parenthood. I've been there many a times. I work with them on a number of issues, and I have been stopped by the folks with the check-in here sign. And the first time, I thought it was Planned Parenthood. I thought that's what they, I thought it was a security feature on their end. And it wasn't until I started to hear their spiel, and that I had two folks standing in front of my car, that I realized that it wasn't Planned Parenthood that was talking to me. It was actually some folks that were trying to get me to go to a van to get an ultrasound. That's what we're dealing with. It's not about just giving people literature. It's about actually trying to get folks to not go in the facility and instead go to a van down the street to get an ultrasound performed by somebody who is not medically certified to perform that medical procedure. That is what's happening. And I think we shouldn't lose sight of that. There is the ability to allow people to access, the ability to shout and yell, whatever it is that they want to yell, while also balancing the rights of folks to access medical care without intimidation, because this is happening every day. And it's not just happening, you know, once a week or once a month. This is an ongoing issue. And I think at the end of the day, we need to recognize that there are other places that we put limits on this as well. You know, when we look at voting, we have a 35-foot buffer zone around polling places for where we can hand out literature about campaigns. This is eight feet, it's not even 35 feet. It's really just to make sure that protesters are not getting hit by cars, and people are able to access the healthcare facility without being, without having that constitutionally protected right to healthcare infringed upon.
All right. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to say, I firmly believe we all have a right to access certain things without being harassed. And I think this bill is not about limiting speech, it's about limiting harassment. I think we all have a right to enter a church, or a synagogue, or a mosque, without somebody yelling at us and telling us we shouldn't be entering that place. We have a right to go to the doctor. We have a right to vote. We have the right to attend a funeral without somebody screaming at us that, you know, they don't like the person whose funeral we're at. And those are all forms of harassment. And harassment is not protected in the same way that speech is protected. Anybody who wants to express an opinion on this topic retains all their rights to publish an editorial, to buy a billboard, to run a commercial on TV, to talk to their friends and neighbors, to influence people. They even have a right to stand on this same sidewalk we keep talking about. They just got to stand in a little bit different place. This is, this is a de minimis law that just protects people who are not the government. You have a right to, you know, petition your government for grievances and redress, but you don't have a right to harass every person exercising their own rights who just wants to go see a doctor. So this just prevents people from harassing other people. I think it's, it's, it is minimal and reasonable, and I hope that we can all put ourselves in the position of somebody being harassed and see why this has value. So I encourage my colleagues to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. So, I drive down that street probably a minimum of once every day, sometimes two or three times a day. And since this bill was presented, I make a purpose of going and sitting there for an hour to two hours, like I did this past Saturday, in between my many other things I had to do. The first thing is, you're in a car, you have the ability to roll your windows up, you also can drive forward and ignore. Even if someone has you a piece of paper, you can ignore. As we have been through so many different cases of distributing information for various concerns around the world, I remember when the Hara Krishnas were first walking the airport, and people said they couldn't pass out their literature. They didn't want them there. I mean, it goes on and on and on. We talk about union protesting. We could talk about every kind of protest in the world. So if you start down this slippery slope, that's where it's going. That's exactly where it's going. You see, we have laws on the books. If anyone has battery committed upon them, if anyone has undue harassment, and undue harassment goes to a much higher level than what you're trying to talk about today, much higher, in order for someone to be arrested. So we have laws on the books that protect people. There's no reason for this. Absolutely no reason. And then I sit there Saturday, and I watch the new scenario on the parking lot. So now we got three people in the middle of the parking lot, they have on vests, and they're waving to people in, and then they go to the person's car, escort them from their car to the door. These people are not allowed on the parking lot. They don't go on the parking lot. And if anybody tries to tell me that they do, I'm going to call you a liar, because they don't. And they don't jump in front of people's cars either, because that is not anything that normally happens in this instance, when you're watching what is going on. And they don't know you're watching.
Alderwoman, I think, did you have a point of order, Alderwoman?
I did not intend to interrupt the Alderwoman from the 19th. It just, it appears to me we have people on the floor of the Board of Aldermen who are not Aldermen, and I believe that's...
Absolutely.
...a violation of the rules. So I just wanted to point that out.
Absolutely. If you are not a member of this Board of Aldermen, you are not free to roam around the floors. There are designated areas to my left and to my right where you can be seated. We also have the marshals, back to our so marshals, anyone that's not a member of the Board of Aldermen, that's not seated in any of the designated areas, please ask them to be seated. And if they would rather not be seated in one of the designated areas, just ask them to sit in the conference room next door and listen to the meeting from there. Thank you, Alderwoman. Please proceed, Alderwoman.
Thank you. Also, if someone's car is damaged, that individual has the right to call the police. There are laws on the books. We don't have any of those calls represented. And then when we talk about the disparity of what is a call for service, it is so very different from what has been suggested to us when we talk to the police department, extremely different. So you don't paint a picture just to get your way. You need to make sure that there's an understanding. When you talked about the check-in sign, that sign had been used in over a year, year and a half, but when it was brought to their attention that it was disruptive and it was providing misinformation to people who were coming there, they stopped using it. No one told that truth. So I need truth to be told, but I also need to know that if this is what we're going to pass, then we're going to stop all protesting, done the way it's being done, and it's on, okay? Because you don't have a right to get up in a policeman's face and spit on him, and all those other things that are being allowed to be done, okay? So we are giving a lot of freedom in this community, but if you want to go here, then we're going to have to get tight on all of it, because there's a lot of things being done wrong, and we're allowing it to happen for the sake of allowing it to happen. So that can't, that can't be it. Now, anybody here who has not driven down that street at least twice, because then I can say, maybe you verify something if you went at least twice, to see, over half of the people there are standing at the curb, facing the traffic that's going up and down the street, showing their signs. Then you got one or two people on the sides here, not even in the entry part to the driveway, and they have their brochures up. Now they're so afraid, they don't even want to approach a car. And if you don't want the information, you just drive forward. But sometimes some people do have a second thought, just want to see what you have to say. But I guarantee you, you can't change their mind with a brochure in five seconds, 10 seconds it takes to park their car and start walking. It's not going to change their mind if they're that committed. So we need to get out of folks' personal life. That's something that everybody's, the government needs to get out of people's personal life. Well, let's get out of their life, okay? Get out of it for real. But I'm not supporting the bill. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 8th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak on behalf of, or in support of Board Bill 34. I was not here during the hearings. I was newly elected, but I did go back and I watched the four and a half hours of hearings that were done last year, last night. And what I noticed was the conversation around public safety aspect of this. The police officer that spoke said that they do have calls for service. They're, they're being called to this location, saying that there is a person in blocking a car, there's a person coming up to a car, and the patients who are coming in are afraid of hitting another human being. And I think that we can say that when you're, when you're enclosed in a car, sure, you have the ability to roll up your windows and keep that pamphlet from coming inside your car, but your immediate reaction is to stop before you hit another human being. And if you were to make contact with, with a person who's outside of the car, well, the liability then is on the person who's driving that vehicle. So this buffer zone would allow us to create an actual bright line. There is an ordinance on the book for impeding the flow of traffic. The officer testified that it was difficult to enforce that, because it's difficult to tell from where the cameras are positioned and from where people are moving, whether or not they're actually blocking that traffic, could the car go around. This would create an actual line on the, on the sidewalk, the same way that we have lines on the edges of the streets. We have, the edge of the sidewalk indicates where you are stepping into the street. And so, all this does is create that line to make it more enforceable for the officers who are responding to these calls to say, listen, you cross the line, please don't do that. This is now the, even the people who are out there demonstrating, the counselors who are on the sidewalk also, have a bright line. They know that they're not going to get in trouble if they don't cross that line. There's plenty of room to still be able to communicate your message. There's plenty of ability to still hold up really graphic images and show people those. There are, you can still put up a sign directing people to the van outside, but there is going to be a line on the sidewalk that then helps distinguish when you are, and when you are not breaking the law. And I do believe that's helpful, I believe, in the context of the other types of protesting that we see here in the city. You know when you have stepped foot into the street. There is, there's a clear demarcation there. And I think that I support this bill because that creates that for us, that creates a line of consistency for both law enforcement, for folks who are accessing this facility, to access their constitutionally protected rights to healthcare, that can be a range of things. We're not just talking about abortions. This is about a whole range of healthcare for men and women, for low-income folks who cannot access these services in other areas. So I rise in support of this as a public safety issue.
Alderwoman from the 14th.
I am against this bill because I think it's a case of, if the message is what I don't want to hear, I'm going to figure out how not to hear it. I think if we've got truly freedom of speech, everybody should be allowed to speak their mind. No one, I mean, when I look at the calls for service, all of this is, I think to me, as they say, a witch hunt. We're looking for something that's not there. We already have laws on the books to cover these people and ensure their safety. Doing more only gives Planned Parenthood a special, a special law just written for them. And I don't see that that's our role as public servants. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to speak on, or speak in support of this bill, and I'd also like to address an issue I've heard over and over again, that this will affect labor unions. Somebody thought, somebody opposing this legislation thought it would be really cute to just lie and say that this affects labor unions, knowing and hearing from many attorneys, they're experts on this matter, that labor unions are protected by federal law. So I just want to address this misnomer that this affects them, because that is not the truth. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in opposition of Board Bill 34. I spoke on this publicly before. What it does is open up a box that we will not be able to close. This will put restrictions on protesters. And as government, I think one of our responsibilities is to protect protester rights, and Board Bill 34 does the exact opposite. And also, I've said this publicly before too, I am not a fan of Planned Parenthood. But if we truly want to address the ramifications of why women, especially women of color and poverty-stricken neighborhoods need Planned Parenthood, then we need to look at the social, economical factors. That includes poverty, that includes access to quality healthcare, and so on and so on. This board bill does not do that. It only protects one organization, and that's not fair to me. And no other healthcare facility was included in the illustration of this legislation, and that stands out to me. I agree with the Alderwoman from the 1st, and the Alderwoman from the 14th. It seems like we are playing favoritism to Planned Parenthood, and that's unfair of government, and I would encourage all of my colleagues to vote in opposition of Board Bill 34. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from, Alderwoman from the 27th.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I stand in opposition to this because what I keep hearing is, it seems like we're discriminating. You can't say one body of protesters, it's okay for them to do it, and then another body saying it's not okay. So that's a discriminatory issue to me. So if we pass this, so that means the ones that just got awarded to say they can protest, we're going to undo that, because that's how you have to look at it. You can't pick and choose who can protest. It's the First Amendment for everybody. So that's the issue that I'm having with this whole scenario. I understand the power of Planned Parenthood, but I also understand as being a black woman, I have a right to decide what I want to do with my body, and I can tell whoever I want, no or yes. So when I pull my car up there, I'm not going at a high speed, I'm not going to hit anybody. So when I pull my car up there, I'm not going at a high speed, I'm not gonna hit anybody, because normally when people pull in a driveway, they're careful because they don't want to hit the property or hit anybody that's in the right of way. And so now you're telling me that if Joe Blow says, "I want to give you information to help you make your decision," you're telling me I don't have that right to get that information? Even if it's a bus down the street that's saying, "You can go down there to get some more information," I have the right to say, "I don't want that information." So either you telling me that these people are gonna attack me and say, "No, you gonna do this," or either you telling me that what was just passed and said the protesters were okay to protest, now we gonna undo them too. So, I'm just making it clear, I'm in oppose to this.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first time I initially voted on this bill, I did vote for it. Reason being is, sometimes we need to allow things the time to breathe and for more discussion to be had. The actual day that we voted on this, I had a protest in my neighborhood. It wasn't dealing with health care, but it was dealing with some things that we have been dealing with in the ward that a lot of people were in opposition to, drugs, prostitution, things along those lines. So with that, we had a lot of disgruntled residents who came out to protest one particular store. Now, when we initially began the protest, we just stood out in front of the store, and people were still walking in, buying items, so it was hard to get the message across based on the way things were going. We needed to block the entrance, so people would notice that we were there for a cause, and then they asked, "What were you doing? Why are you here?" And we had to force that information on some individuals. Had we not been blocking the door or the entrance, I don't think that message would have been able to come up, been gotten across. I think it's important to understand that regardless of what somebody is protesting for, if they're passionate about it and they want people to get a message that they feel passionate about, then everybody needs the opportunity to be able to speak their piece. Now, if we're talking about impeding the flow of traffic, maybe that's something we only need to look at by itself, maybe strengthen up the laws on that in general. We just spoke about the cameras not being able to see, maybe they need to move the cameras. I'm not necessarily in opposition of this in particular, I'm in opposition of the way things are kind of laid out in it in particular. I think we really need to look at how to, I think, protect people's rights when they want to voice their opinions on something. We know a lot of things are going on in our city. These people are out here every single day for a cause that they believe in. I hate pulling up at Planned Parenthood. I do not like how they do the way, you know, what they do, but they are out there passionately every single day saying that we want you to get this information. So, it is up to me to say, "I don't want this." I can roll up my car window, I can just speed on paths, I think, but if they aren't able to get close enough to the vehicle to stop you, to make you slow down your car, then the people out there kind of don't get the message across. They do have to scream it across the street, they do have to yell to get that message across, opposed to getting you to stop to really get what they mean, or get the message that they want to give out. So it's not so much as me rising in opposition, it's just understanding that we got a few ways that we can look at things, and I don't think the first way to do something is to look at stopping people from being vocal. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-third.
I agree with almost all the comments that have been against this. And the protesters that were out there, again, protesting the Stockley, I don't think the fines were the same. This one's pretty specific, that it's a hundred dollar fine, up to five hundred dollars, ninety days in jail. And I would hope that even when we're black in streets, which I don't agree with any of that myself, I hope we're not putting people in jail for ninety days. Generally, they're in and out on their own recognizance within a few minutes or hours. I don't think that they should be, and I agree with one of the bills that came up earlier that said we shouldn't be holding people twenty-four hours for these things. But this one's pretty specific in saying that it's a hundred dollars, up to five hundred dollars, and ninety days in jail. You know, if we're gonna do that, then we should put that in every one of the protest bills, so that anytime anybody's protesting, it's a hundred bucks, and then we should go out and put them in jail for ninety days. I disagree with that, but I certainly disagree with, you know, being picky and pick and choose what protests we support or don't support. I agree with a lot of the stuff that went on with the protesters. I didn't go out and protest, but I agree with what they were out there and their rights to want to say, "Hey, this is not what we want to see." Way back in the day, I was one of the guys that would be out there, you know, back in the day, I was a member of CORE, which we fought for what we believe were our rights. The voting age at that time was twenty-one, the drinking age was twenty-one. We fought for the right to be able to vote at eighteen, and we won. We vote for the right to be able to drink beer at eighteen, and for a while, the drinking age in Missouri and Illinois came down to eighteen, I know it moved back up again, but we fought for them. We were out in the streets and protesting because we felt things were unfair. And once we start saying, "This is how we're gonna treat one group of protesters versus another," I don't believe they have the votes to pass this today anyway, but if we do this, then we need to come back with a board bill that says, "You protest, you're going to jail." And I strongly disagree with that, I wouldn't support that kind of bill the same way I do not support this. But I do believe that this is, this is picking out one group versus another, and I just strongly hope that we do not pass this out of here.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the fifteenth.
President, members of the board, I just wanted to comment on a couple things that the alderman from the twenty-third ward said. Blocking traffic is an ordinance violation, which is the exact same language or the exact same, you know, violation that is in this current bill. So, right now that people can face a five hundred dollar fine and ninety days in jail for blocking traffic because it is an ordinance violation. We typically see that folks are released within twenty-four hours from custody, but that is not always the case. And there have been varying degrees of fines that have been levied against people for blocking traffic, because again, it is an ordinance violation. So, the language is actually consistent with the rules that we already enforce against people who are violating ordinances such as blocking traffic. Thank you.
Alderman from the first.
President, members of the board, the alderman from the fifteenth talked about the first, one of the times she went to Planned Parenthood, and she thought that that was the way that it was supposed to be, that you're supposed to sign in. And so I had suggested to the alderman of the twenty-fifth, when we spoke about this last, why don't they put up a sign? Pretty easy. Sign says, "You do not have to sign in outside the building," something like that. It doesn't have to be my exact verbiage, but that right there rectifies that. So, you know, "Don't stop, sign in inside," or whatever message they want. And I asked alderman from the seventeenth, since that's in his ward, if that would be something that would be permitted, because I'm not trying to encourage any more signage where you don't need it, because in North St. Louis, we have sign pollution. So, but he said he thought it could be. So just put up a sign directing people not to stop for protesters, sign in inside. Sometimes we go to too many laws for things that we don't need to do, okay? And some people have talked about that it being legal with the Supreme Court. There are some things that Supreme Court says is legal I don't agree with. This was a conservative board that let this Supreme Court, and I don't think that they like protesters. So, the Colorado deal that they let go through, that is because they long-term think, and then they'll be using it for something else. That's what my whole point is, that they'll use it for something else and something else. And so, there are lots of things that I don't agree with that this court that's sitting here now is doing, or for the last few decades has been doing, okay? So, just because it passed the Supreme Court is not a bellwether for me. My question is, should we have this here in the city of St. Louis? With all of the protesting that has been going on, I think not. The alderman from the fifteen is correct in saying that they took the risk, that they went out because they were challenging it. And you all know, I admire her and like her and have protected her when I thought people were messing with her, okay? And will protect most of the young women down here, because I am a feminist. I came down here and kept my name, and people said, "How could you do that?" Because my name is Sharon Tyus, and it's been that way for almost years. Okay? But in being a feminist, I also am a black feminist, which, so I have to weigh racism and sexism. It's something I get up with every day. When I have conversations with my black brothers, they understand racism. When I have conversations with my white sisters, they understand sexism. Sometimes they don't understand the two connecting. I don't get that. I don't get to do that. I have to wake up every day and I have to look at that. And for me, there, again, my own eyewitness testimony and what I've seen myself, they have not made a compelling case. And then when you add things like the police saying, "Oh, well, we count calls for service when we just show up." I've been talking to the black people who represent North St. Louis, and we're all going, "What? You have police that show up and just, and drive by and say, 'Let us drop in.'" We don't have that. So, you're telling a secret that you might want to keep secret, okay? Because now the Director of Public Safety lives in my ward, and he's gonna hear an earful about how do the police do that? Because on your own corner where he lives, we got a problem, okay? So we want that same kind of policing. But I think that's incorrect. The police are also incorrect with things. That is not a call for service. So, I don't care if the police say it is, everything they say is not true either. That is policing, that is not a call for service. There has not been any overwhelming need to pass this legislation. And so, and I've read the Colorado case while people have been debating, and I just think that that's wrong too. When you start to carve out doctrines to the First Amendment, for me, it better be public safety. It cannot be, I just don't, I just don't want to hear what you say. Because when I don't want to hear what you say and I go in to vote, I put my arm out just like that, and I march. And then whatever you say, I don't hear. And if I'm in my car, if I could drive up and vote in my car, I really wouldn't hear what you say. Because I put my radio on, and I rock out, and I would say, "Look at those people out there," and go about my business, okay? And if that's what Planned Parenthood really wants, or any of these other people who I don't hear any other hospitals even asking for, so they may be unwilling participants, I would say put up signage. But I don't believe, I think that they made it broad because they couldn't write it a different way. I have never heard a hospital ask for this, and so this is really still specifically for Planned Parenthood, and it's not a good idea, and I continue my opposition to it, because I think free speech is very, very important. Everybody's mind and those who do not agree with me.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. With the utmost respect, I do hope that everyone in the world has the confidence that you do when we're driving in places and walking. I do want to say, I don't think that a sign solves the issue here. I think that telling drivers coming in that they don't have to stop does not solve the issue of having another body in front of the car. If a body is coming up in front of them and they take the, they continue to move forward and they hit a person, then they're liable for that interaction. And I do, I do also want to say that I absolutely support First Amendment rights to free speech. I do support also narrowly tailored restrictions on the right to speak. We have those in a lot of areas. You cannot yell "fire" in a theater, you can't incite violence, you cannot make directed violent threats to people without consequences. There are consequences to free speech, and this is, this is a very narrow, narrowly tailored ordinance to protect those who are using a health care facility. I have constituents who work as clinic escorts who have told me about all of the violent things that have been said to them. They've been followed to their cars, they've been threatened that people will be following them home, walking around with pictures of employees. This is, as abortion services, as even contraception is so incredibly controversial in our world right now, this is, this is a scary time for people who are trying to just take care of themselves and their families to access services that they are constitutionally allowed to access. So, I just, thank you so much. I rise again in support.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I received a picture on my desk. It looked like they got protesters inside and outside of the building. So are these two different types of protesters?
I'm not, whoever's passing out didn't give me a copy.
They got people standing inside with signs as well, so I'm trying to figure out if they have a certain type of protester.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what that is.
Who can answer that question?
Well, that picture could, Alderman, that picture could have come from anywhere.
Yeah, but I'm trying to figure out why people are inside protesting and some are outside protesting.
Would you like to ask anybody to, the people on the inside are not protesters according to the alderman from the nineteenth.
What are they doing with signs?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the picture is.
I'm trying to figure out if certain ones are allowed in and certain ones are not.
I don't.
Is there a certain type of protester?
Is there a cer, no, I don't, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that if, Alderman from the first may be able to.
I can explain it to him.
Please, please do. On my microphone.
Oh, you want, okay.
No, no, hold on a second, hold on. We have to do this correctly. If you'd like the alderman from the first to yield for questioning.
Did you pass it out?
Would you yield for questioning?
She passed it out.
Would you like the alderman from the first to yield for questioning?
The alderman from the fifteen was standing up first.
I know, but you can ask whoever you would like to yield for questioning. You can, if you want to.
Yes, and I would yield to the fifteenth, and she passed it out.
So who, so, so are you, are you asking for the alderman, Alderman from the fifteenth to yield for questioning? Yeah, Alderman from the fifteenth, will you yield for questioning to the alderman from the fourth?
Yes.
Alderman from the fourth, please proceed.
Who are these people inside with the picket sign?
So, I'm not sure. This is the picture that comes up on Google Maps. So when I was speaking earlier, what I said was that I was waiting on it to be passed out, but it was a picture to show how many car spaces were in there. And this is the picture that comes up when you Google the health care facility on Google.
It seems to me that a special type of person is inside because I'm sure you would let the people outside on the sidewalk in the place come in and protest, so are there two different groups that are combating each other?
It's possible. There are clinic escorts that I know are allowed inside of the area, so that when folks come and park, they escort them to the facility.
Buffer those people too?
So I, I think it's very possible that the people inside the fence are the clinic escorts.
They're working for the, for Planned Parenthood.
They work for Planned Parenthood to escort people from their cars safely into the facility.
Yeah, so they're part of Planned Parenthood.
That does answer my question. Alderman from the first, will you yield?
Alderman from the first, Alderman, Alderman from the first will yield to the alderman from the fourth.
I yield to my superior alderperson.
All right, please proceed, Alderman.
Who are these people inside protesting?
I thought that these were the people, you know, so they have people who actually will walk you in and protect you, so that's who I thought these people were, are the people who protect you, because the protesters are not allowed to be inside the gate, they have to be outside the gate.
Well, they have protest signs and they're standing on the island.
But they might have information signs, this is not big enough, so I can't testify exactly what they have, but maybe they have, maybe they have what I was talking about, informational signs saying, "You don't have to," or whatever, but these are, in fact, I am getting ready to sign up to go be one of the people who guard the people who go in, because I do understand the rights, more than all these young people. I remember when people had to use hangers and everything else, so. But these are not protesters inside, these are the people who work for Planned Parenthood or who are volunteering with Planned Parenthood. All the protesters are outside, and I will bring it to your attention that they are not in the driveway.
Yes.
That all those protesters are on the sidewalk.
Wonder, do they get paid for that?
I don't think so. I think that that's their passion. I don't think that the protesters who are out there in the streets got paid either. I think that was our passion. When the Shockley verdict came in and other verdicts, we're passionate. Now, you and I are probably a little too old to be out there most times, but when I saw the lady with President Obama who had been one of the original marchers, maybe we're not.
My question has been answered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Not to belabor a lot of conversation, but I would like to ask if the alderman from the sixth will yield for one question.
Alderman from the sixth, will you yield a question to the alderman from twenty-second?
One.
Yeah, thank you, Alderman.
Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Thank you. Well, I want to kind of briefly go back to something Alderman from the first said, and the con- the conversation was about a nuisance. And what I heard you say, that they're not identified as a nuisance. Is that correct, Planned Parenthood at that location?
It's my understanding at the time the bill was introduced, it was not, and I have similar places in my ward that we did not put on the nuisance list because it's not the fault of the owners themselves. It's what's happening outside their facilities.
Right, and so that brings up a point that I have. Most people that are familiar with the west side or the north side of St. Louis and some of our convenience stores or, or gas stations, I have one that's infamously known as Murder Mobile. Now, I have personally gone there to try to work with the owners and encourage them to get better lighting, to get more camera surveillance, and they have some very top-notch camera equipment. I mean, they can pretty much see real, real clear all the way across the street. And the city council's office, oftentimes when we have a nuisance in my ward, they require the owner to participate in getting security. And oftentimes, they really push for off-duty police officers. And the reason they prefer off-duty police officers rather than general security is because the people in the neighborhood don't really respect the security staff if they're not police officers. The police officers obviously have power of arresting. And I'm just curious as to what steps have Planned Parenthood gone through to fix this problem versus asking for specialized legislation.
Planned Parenthood did not ask for this specialized legislation. We worked as a team to come up with what we thought was the smartest solution, and they were included in the conversation. They have put in a number of items over the years to try and make this a non-issue or make it safer for both the demonstrators and the patients accessing care, and have not been able to do so. They do have a nice camera system. They do have security officers. I think we all know that hiring off-duty police officers from the city of St. Louis is very difficult at this point in time just due to the fact that there are so few officers and they're made to work mandatory overtime quite a few times throughout the year. So it's not feasible at this time. But Planned Parenthood has tried over the course of, of the years, including when the president of the board was the sixth ward alderman. He was part of those conversations. And so sort of at the end of our rope with respect to trying things and hoping that something like this will work.
Curious if Planned Parenthood ever thought about how their entrance is designed and if there's a way to design it in a way that people don't necessarily have to stop right up there by the sidewalk. They come further in before they stop and maybe there's a guard shack or something like that and a real check-in. You know, that's Planned Parenthood and not a false check-in.
Design has been discussed in the past, and nothing that they've done so far to date has been able to work.
So what I'm hearing is they discuss designs, but they haven't implemented new designs.
I don't know historically what the entrance or exit used to look like. I only have data for the past probably five years.
And I've talked to the alderman from the seventeenth. He's not here today, and that has been the design for quite some time, probably more than 10 years plus easily. And this sounds like it's a growing problem, so I'm just wondering if Planned Parenthood has really thought recently about redesigning the entrance. Maybe that's, you know, a better approach to solving this problem. Because what I don't want it to seem like to my constituents is that certain organizations get specialized legislation to deal with their problem whereby stores through no fault of their own in my community, they have to get off-duty police officers. If they don't get an off-duty police officer, chances are they are going to be on the shutdown list because an off-duty police officer really abates the problem.
We're not legally able to require a property to hire an off-duty police officer.
I agree 100%, but we highly suggest that it, oftentimes it works. Because I've seen where they've hired off-duty police officers and the problem kind of went away. I just wanted to bring that up, you know, as a thought, that maybe there's some more work that Planned Parenthood could do to resolve the problem prior to passing this bill. That's all. So thank you for your time.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from six, you recognize closed on third reading of Board Bill 34, Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. This is and always has been a bill about public safety. I would not be standing before you today if there were not a wide variety of stakeholders who saw this as a problem. Based on all of the research I've done, the videos I've seen, everything I've read, the people I've spoken to, this is the next step that we need to take as a city to try and ensure that people are able to access healthcare and that demonstrators' First Rights Amendment are also protected. And also, I wanted to address the fact that people are saying that this bill is not going to pass. If the bill doesn't pass, it does not mean that the conversation is not important to have here at the board. There are many times, including Alderman Kennedy just getting up and talking about how long it took to get some of the minority women-owned business pieces in place. And so having a conversation, having a bill not voted to pass out of the board is not a failure in my mind. I will also say that in an age where women's reproductive health rights are increasingly being attacked, I would really encourage my colleagues to trust women and do the right thing. Vote yes on Board Bill 34, Committee Substitute.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by the Alderman from six and seconded by the Alderman from the fifteenth that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 34, Committee Substitute. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyas?
No.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
No.
Alderman Bosley?
No.
Alderman Moore?
No.
Alderwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracchia?
Aye.
Alderman Kotar?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Bulmer?
No.
Alderwoman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz?
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy?
No.
Alderwoman Howard?
No.
Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg?
No.
Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Kennedy?
No.
Alderwoman Davis?
No.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
No.
Alderman Boyd?
No.
Alderman Bakaro?
No.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cohn?
Aye!
Alderman Williamson? Alderwoman Boyd?
No.
Alderwoman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
No.
Alderwoman Hubbard? Alderman Kotar? Alderman Arnowitz?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Williamson?
You have nine a votes, 15 no votes, Mr. President.
You have to do it in the mic.
You have nine a votes, 15 no votes, Mr. President.
I vote, failed to sustain the motion of the Alderman from the six. Board Bill 34, Committee Substitute fails. On Board Bill 270.
Board Bill 270, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Jeffrey Boyd, an ordinance approving a minority and women-owned business enterprise program for the city of St. Louis, authorizing certain other actions, amending Ordinance 69427 pertaining to workforce inclusion by amending Sections 3, 4, 5, and 10 of said ordinance, which are codified in Sections 3.110.020, 3.110.030, 3.110.040, and 3.110.090 of the revised code to increase percentage goals for minority women and city residents, and to put in place a mandatory one-year disqualification penalty and liquidated damages for developers and contractors who fail to meet the goals and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill Number 270.
Mr. President and members of the board, I move for third reading and final passage of Board Bill 270, Committee Substitute.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second. I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by the Alderman from the first. Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize.
Yes, Mr. President and members of the board, we've had a lot of rich conversation about this bill on the perfection consent calendar, and I'll just stand before you and answer any other questions that may have arisen since then.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? You recognize the close, Alderman.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that because of this legislation being so historic in nature, and it passed unanimously on the perfection consent calendar, I would like to move that this board bill be passed in bank.
Um, it's been, there are some people, I would, I would do it, but there are some people that are off the floor and, and everything else. And, and since it's already been perfected, I would recommend you not alter or change the bill right now.
Mr. President and members of the board, I close to third reading, finally pass Board Bill 270, Committee Substitute.
It's been moved, moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the first, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 270. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyas?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard? Alderwoman Ingracchia?
Aye.
Alderman Kotar? Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Bulmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz? Alderwoman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Bakaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy? Alderman Cohn?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd? Alderwoman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard? Alderman Kotar? Alderman Arnowitz?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Ogilvy? You have 24 a votes, no no votes, Mr. President.
By your vote, sustained motion of the Alderman from the twenty-second and third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 270. Mr. Clerk, we haven't anything further.
Just.
On, on that calendar.
No, we do not, Mr. President. There's nothing further on the calendar, Mr. President.
All right. Report of enrollment.
Board Bill 265, Board Bill 267, Board Bill 269, Board Bill 271, Board Bill 171, Board Bill 206, Board Bill 220, Board Bill 239, Board Bill 262AA, Board Bill 222 as amended, Board Bill 204 as amended, Board Bill 266, Board Bill 168 as amended. I'm sorry. Board Bill 233, Board Bill 270, Committee Substitute, Board Bill 262 as amended. Do we have any more? Is it? Board Bill 40, Board Bill 254, and Board Bill 264.
Could you read all those one more time for me, Mr. Clerk?
Board Bill 265, Board Bill 267, Board Bill 269, Board Bill 271, Board Bill 171, Board Bill, Board Bill 206, Board Bill 220, Board Bill 239, Board Bill 262 as amended, Board Bill 2, 222 as amended, Board Bill 204 as amended, Board Bill 266, Board Bill 233, Board Bill 270, Community Substitute, Board Bill 40, Board Bill 254, and Board Bill 264.
I think you're missing one. All other business being suspended, President shall in open session affix his signature heretude and that these may become law. For the reason 168 as amended was not, was not read out loud is that it was an error Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolutions, Count.
Mr. President and members of the board, I move to adopt our courtesy resolution.
Moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution Number 258, sponsored by Alderman Bulmer, approval by the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee of the Forest Park Fund Account pursuant to Ordinance 62196 regarding the proceeds of the Roundup Program.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognized on the first reading of Resolution 258.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request unanimous consent.
Here ain't no objection. Please proceed, Alderman.
Resolution 258 is regard to the Roundup Program, which has nothing to do with bug spray. This is on your utility bills when they have the extra money designated through special park funding from ordinance passed in 1990. And this requires money to be designated for our projects in Forest Park first and freeing up the rest of the money for the other parks in the city of St. Louis. So with that, I request approval.
All right. You'd like to make a motion to adopt?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 258.
Moved by Alderman from the tenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much.
There's nothing further on the first reading of resolutions, Count.
Second reading.
Resolution 243 as amended, sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Mohammed, and Alderman Bakaro. Legislation Committee to convene hearings on the potential community benefit of a public municipal bank, the banking industry, and its effect on the city.
Alderman, Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the second read on Resolution 243 as amended.
Mr. President, members of the board, on behalf of the sponsor, ask for unanimous consent. No, I move for adoption of.
Yeah. Been moved by the alderman from the 18th, seconded by the alderman from the 22nd. Alderman from the 18th, please proceed.
Mr. President, members of the board, this resolution did pass the Legislation Committee with a due-pass recommendation. It simply directs the Legislation Committee to do some investigation and hold some public hearings related to the possibility of the creation of a municipal bank, dealing with the concepts and looking at even best practices and getting people's opinions about how this can function. It would also direct the Legislation Committee to create a task force that would go to even further detail, composed of members of the community, that would go into even further detail to make a recommendation back to the Legislation Committee as to whether or not having such a municipal bank would be a benefit to the citizens of the city of St. Louis. And so then the resolution is primarily directing, as I said, the Legislation Committee to do some investigation about the concept and then the creation of this task force.
Alderman from the first.
It's kind of a point of order in question. So since this can't be accomplished before we end our session, I've not known us to carry things over to the next, to the next session. So to me, this is, I mean, it could get passed, but there's no way it can be done between now and tomorrow. And so I thought this would have been better brought up in the new session.
Hold on for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you were talking, so I couldn't. Mr. President, I was, I got up to ask.
I know you're, I know you all are senior members.
No, but you were talking up there. Mr. President, if the members, if the alderman from the 18th would yield.
All right, alderman from the 18th will yield to Alderman from the first.
Yes, I will.
Okay, but I still say the president was talking. So I can't recall, but perhaps you can, us carrying something over once the session. The whole point of sign and die and everything is to, that it ends, okay? So now we're convening something to happen on the last day of the session. So I just have kind of a question about a point of order, how that works, because I don't think that we can do that. I think that that should have been reintroduced for next time. So just wanted to pick your brain.
I have seen that before. I could think of at least three other resolutions that were done this way in more recent times than our memories go back to. But I have seen that done. So you do raise a question in relation to it.
So that's fine. I missed 10 years, unfortunately, because I'm pretty good at memory, what you did to me or for me. And so I will yield to you being here continuously. But even with that, I say that we need to check that, because I do really believe procedurally that when we do sign and die, anything that has not been accomplished should be reintroduced. But I will yield to the senior person.
We'll check it. All right, thank you. Alderman from the 19th.
I think that I was listening to the alderman from the first, and I, and maybe I read it wrong, because the work is not to be completed and reported until November of 2018. So I think you could pass it knowing that the work has an end date for accomplishment. But I just wanted to rise in support, because even though some people have some negative thoughts out in the community that we're trying to start a bank and all of that, what they don't understand is that we need to have a lot of conversation with our banks, because they're playing with the Community Reinvestment Act. A lot of them have been on notice from the federal government for years, and they barely slapped them on their hands. We invest a lot of money that we collect from the city and various banks. They're not returning the opportunities for people to get loans. There's a lot of things that need to be talked about. And so this is a good thing for us to look at. And we have some good banking partners, you know, the St. Louis Community Credit Union and number of others. They're good banking partners, but you can't just have one in an entire city. We need to have conversations and put some things in place. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize close.
I renew my motion.
All right, it's been moved by the alderman from the 18th, seconded by the alderman from the 22nd, that we second-read Resolution 243 as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
We have no further resolutions on the second reading calendar, Mr. President.
Miss Lanis, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, April 17, 2018, there will be a full board meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. It will be the first meeting of the 2018-2019 session. Wednesday, April 18, 2018, there are no meetings. Thursday, April 19, 2018, there are no meetings. And Friday, April 20, 2018, there will not be a full board meeting. There are no further announcements.
Alderman from the fourth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have a moment of silence for all the past aldermen of the fourth ward, Peggy Ryan, but also civil rights attorney Eric Vickers.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Was the alderman first, did you have anything to add to that? Okay, yeah. If everyone could please stand and join us for a moment of silence for Peggy, who served well and for numerous years and was helpful to all of us, not just in her ward but across the city, and Eric Vickers, who fought for the rights of people who couldn't fight for them for themselves, and he was not shy about doing it. So join, please, let's join in a moment of silence for both of them. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 14th.
Solemn note, I'd like to wish Alderman from the 25th happy birthday, and I would like all of us to join in singing him happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Shane. Happy birthday to you.
Now, 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 you know, I'm never in tune, so that's why I moved back from the mic. When they watch that on TV, they're gonna say, ooh, turn it down. So Alderman from the 25th.
Mr. President, I honestly didn't think that the alderman from the 14th would do that, but thank you very much, Carol. That just made my day. So last year, I actually had the privilege of sharing my birthday with the risen Lord Jesus Christ, which is always an interesting birthday to share. I'm not sure how the Christmas birthdays do it, but this year I get to share it with all of you. So take that for what it's worth. I did buy some cakes, so they're in the leisure room for everyone to enjoy, and thank you for celebrating my birthday with me this morning, or this afternoon now.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Mr. President, members of the board, I didn't get a chance to recognize him earlier, but my special guest today is Mr. Vladimir Monroe. He's with St. Louis Development Corporation. He's our newly appointed Director of Minority Business Development and Compliance. So he will be making sure he's our champion for Board Bill 270, Committee Substitute.
All right, welcome. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the alderman from the 5th and the 17th be excused for necessary actions.
Moved by the alderman from the 18th, seconded by the alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Tuesday, April 17, 10:00 a.m.
You need to adjourn, sign and die.
Correct.
So rephrase it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Board of Aldermen adjourns, sign and die, to reconvene Tuesday, April 17, 10:00 a.m.
Moved by the alderman from the 18th, I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by the alderman from the 14th. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, adjourn, sign and die.